What happens to what information we get?
Yeah.
I'm also. So what happens to what information we get?
Yeah.
I'm also.
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 Yeah.[527.62]
You like to wear your mask?
I'm trying here. Why is it even on?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure like the other, we have the mayor and John Philatio probably were there.
It messes with Rafi's car. It comes on on its own. Oh dear goodness in heaven, help me here. For Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. Uh, the first item on the agenda, Mr. Ferrari, is finance. Oh, no, about that. This is Mr. Mr. Rivera.
Thank you. Call to our finance committee, and the first item is 2022, 2023 HUD Continuum of Care for Capital District YMCA. That's the other.
Yes.
Sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so this request is basically an annual contract that we have with the YMCA for the HUD Continuum of Care, and it helps to support rental and administrative costs for homelessness in the City of Schenectady. So they operate the facility at 845 Broadway. Um, so this is just a recommendation for the city council to approve renewing this annual contract that we have with the YMCA to operate the program at 845 Broadway. And this, the first one is for the 10-bed, I believe. So there's two contracts. One is for the 10-bed, and then the second is for the 200-bed. So the first one's for the, for the 10-bed.
Any question on 10 minutes? May I have a motion? Second? All in favor? Aye.
Um, second, again, it's the same thing, just for 10-bed.
Any discussion? May I have a motion? All in favor? And the next item, thank you.
Yeah.
The next item is about a public hearing, and I try to bring it forward. Mr. Ferrari.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferrari, again.
Council President Porterfield, City Council. Uh, we're here today to, uh, request to schedule a public hearing for October 11th of 2023 on the, um, budget for 2023 budget. Uh, we're hoping that we get this passed, and, uh, after we have the, uh, public hearing, uh, we're hoping that on the 17th of October, we're able to discuss, uh, what we called, and, uh, hopefully we'll pass the budget by the 24th of October.
Like a lead, sir.
We're trying to get, get out of the plan, get out of the plan.
I like the plan, yeah. Any question on this? May I have a motion?
Come on, boy.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. The next item is a proposed spot off allocation, and this is a follow-up, uh, signed to Mr. Porterfield. Just before Mr. Porterfield just pointed away, this one, uh, highlight, uh, the first round of allocation, starting at $16 million 005785. And a few weeks ago, we, uh, we allocated additional $14 million 609,000, 955, totaling $30 million 696740. So currently, we have allocated $30.6, almost $30.7 million dollars of auto funding. Can I just walk around with that before I hand it to you?
Uh, thank you. So, um, the common things Mr. Rivera already said, what we were allocating, whichever one we moved, in any case. Um, so what I'd like to do tonight is to, um, allocate further funds, and, um, I want to say that one group, the Metroplex, did essentially on email withdraw, um, their application because it was already taken care of because of the paving that was being done down there. It satisfied what they needed done. Uh, so the, um, so I asked her folks to send anything. The only thing I, um, I received from, I did receive something from Ms. Patrick, that she said she wouldn't be here tonight. So I would just like to, um, start there. And, um, in the packet, there should be a backup of all the applications that Mr. made. So, um, what Ms. Patrick was most concerned about was, was the parks. And so, um, recommendations, she wasn't specific, so from the list that was proposed, um, I, there's $200,000 for, um, excuse me, $500,000 for the Eight Diamond lighting. Um, I'm recommending $500,000 for Central Park Tennis. It's, it should be in the packet. So, okay. Um, do you have the, the whole sheet? Okay. Um, $500,000 for the Central Park Tennis, um, $500,000 for Hillhurst, um, $250,000, and these, this, all of this was on the last thing that the mayor had committed. Uh, $250,000 for the Old Palace, and, um, $250,000 for the Riverside Park Tennis, and, um, and another, since we're doing the parks, another $1 million for Central Park General Improvement, which would actually take that to what the original request was, which was $5.5 million, because we already approved $4.5 million. So those are the ones that, um, that I have here from Ms. Patrick. So we could just go around and, um, and if others have things that they want to move forward, I can start with Mr. Conwady, if you had anything, and maybe you had parts the last time. Do you have anything?
I think there should be the projects that the mayor proposed last time, with the parks at $6.0 million, I believe. And then, uh, I believe the remainder of the money should be put towards sidewalks and roads.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Patrick, excuse me, Mr. Ferrari?
Uh, so, um, I've also, I, I know last time we spoke about the parks, and we were kind of all agreeing with them, and I didn't really get to, to vote on that. So, um, I think the parks, every different neighborhood is a chance for everyone in the whole community to be serviced by, by the parks. And, um, so I'm in favor of, of proposing, uh, giving all that money to, to parks. And again, in infrastructure, but I'd also like to bring up that, um, um, I'd like to not spend all of our money, um, in this particular session, um, to see what's left and to kind of come around again. I'd like to pay a greater amount of gratitude to our city employees, especially local 1037, Office of General Services, they were out in the, during the pandemic. They were out in the streets every day, they were in the office every day. They didn't have the opportunity to stay home and, and work from their computers, um, or work from a private office. They were on the streets, they were sanitation workers, water, sewer. Um, and I'd like to, um, at some point, visit, um, extending some money to them, um, to the workers who were frontline workers, essential workers, um, as far as maybe some, uh, funding for their, uh, uh, like everyone else received for, um, being vaccinated, presenting their vaccination card. So, again, I think that would be very important to me. Um, I'd like just to, uh, for us to consider saving some money, um, to allot for that. Um, again, there's no application, but again, this, this money is to use for, um, anyone who's affected by COVID. And if there was anyone affected by COVID, it was the amount was probably, uh, between 140 and 150, um, local 1037, uh, employees who, um, had to stay home of COVID, who were out in, every day, working COVID, bringing COVID back to their families from being, uh, infected by COVID. So my first focus, uh, today would be for the parks, definitely. Um, and then, um, I would like to see some infrastructure, um, issues, um, addressed. Um, I know there was a, a breakover in the north side today, the water's still not established. So we have some extremely aging infrastructure in this city. And, um, again, if we, if we work on some of the infrastructure, it can benefit every single member of, uh, of the community. So that's what I would hope to, to focus on.
And in terms of, let me just address, in terms of the, the money from 1037, there was some money that was put aside called job retention, that's not even included in this. Correct. No, we have not even spent all of that. So, um, on that, I mean, if that's a consideration we can consider, because as I understand it, there's, there's like least a million left there. So, um, if that's to be a consideration, consensus, then that's a place that we can look at. Yes. Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Rivera?
Yes, thank you. I can just add to that, so I'm in favor of us moving forward with, um, the parks' project, uh, this cycle. Majority of them, not all of them. And I just have a little cheat sheet here, the Central Park Eight Diamond, the Central Park Tennis Court, the Hillhurst Fairview Park, and the Hillhurst, um, full repair, and the Riverside Park. I would like to see those, that we discuss and consider these projects and to perform the, the regards to the parks.
So should I, are you ready to jump in here?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, we're just talking about.
We're talking about our recommendations at this point in time. Where is she?
Okay, um, so, uh, the projects that I need to recommend and afford would be, um, the Coco House. I think this is funded, um, at $500,000. Employees Girls Club.
So, just to be clear, because, um, are we, so if you could just tell us how much we want the funding for?
So Coco House, or?
You said Coco House, you said $500,000.
Yep, Employees Girls Club, uh, they put in $331,000.
That's the full amount they got for? Okay.
I also like to see Hamilton Hill Heart Center. $1.2 million to fund it.
So, um, just in terms of, I think everyone got the email from Hamilton Hill Heart Center, so I think it, it, um, it requires a little further discussion. Ms. Dia sent us an email. Initially, they asked for, I think it was 1.5. I can look it up. And 1.7, initially, thank you, it was 1.7. And they wanted to do artist's funding, excuse me, artist's housing. Finally, in turn, while we were in this process, they actually received funding from another source to do their artist's housing. So their ask has, um, been reduced and also revised to a, um, different ask. Um, Ms. Dia, do you want to come, could you just come and explain what that is?
Yes, we all received the proposal from the Art Center. Um, they're looking to create a, a new building, essentially. Their existing building has been in need of a lot of repairs, and I believe the objective is to take the first step in building a structure in the current sculpture park with a longer range of plan of rebuilding where their current building is. So now that they have the sculpture park and the existing, um, site across the street, um, they're looking to, um, they're looking to put this funding towards that. Um, and this would, I, does anybody have any questions about the proposal? I'm not, I don't know all the, I said you all see that.
We're doing good, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I just, oh. I didn't know what you were speaking, are you reading the email to us? Or you're speaking on behalf of them, or you have the proposal there?
I have a proposal, which I sent to all of you.
Right, okay, that's what, you're reading, okay.
Which, you know, includes a lot of information about what they do, what this would be. They have a lot of different aspects of their programming, which includes after-school programs, um, you know, cultural events, art exhibits, um, various things of, of that nature. Music lessons, dance lessons, they, they do a lot of different programming. Um, and they've been around for over 50 years in Hamilton Hill, so.
Any questions, Rivera? Just wanted you to make sure, I know that you all got it, but I just wanted you to, um, know that it's revised, it's from the initial application, including the amounts. Thank you. Uh, was that, Mr. Ferrari, was there anything else?
Um, yeah, yeah, that's it for now. I just, um, you know, letting off a few, so, I'm remembering, I mean, that's a, um.
Okay, no discussion. Mr. Ian?
So my agreement with funding the partial help of the parks that Mr. Conwady recommended, um, specifically, I know Mr. Rivera, and I'll let him again. It's the Eight Diamond, the Central Park Tennis Court, Hillhurst, the, um, full renovations for Riverside Tennis Court, and, uh, including the additional million to raise the general, uh, sort of park improvements to the full ask. Additionally, I'd like to include both of the YMCA projects. Uh, the mayor recommended one, their urgency at $364,000. I would like to include in the second, which was a transition program for $750,000. Additionally, I'd like to include the Parkers', uh, filtration program for $76,000. I would like to include the Kulanis Project for $10,000. And I would also like to make in consideration for the Stockade Palm Station. I know they're asking for considerably more, but I would recommend, um, leaving them halfway at $750,000, and I think this will end during discussion.
Okay, um, so, uh, from, again, from the mayor's list, uh, you already mentioned the, um, urgency for the Y. So also, um, that they, he recommended Habitat for Humanity for $500,000, I'd like to support that. I'd also like to support, um, $100,000 for SCAP and the City Hall HVAC project, I'm sorry?
Start E-bus, we'll retire right now.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, again. Okay. Okay. And the City Hall HVAC for $352,000. That was it, so we can, go ahead, do a question now?
Um, my question was just around Jerry Grail Park. So you have it out to bid, anyways, it just wasn't what everybody was mentioning.
It is, it is.
They have it out to bid, and we know we're going to need more funding to complete the whole project, with like everything that's in the bid.
Okay. So, uh, initially, you, they, you came to us, it was $120,000 of the lighting.
Mm-hmm.
And are you still talking about that number?
Um, I mean, that's what the request was when we put in the application, and we know the costs are increasing. We add, we actually added a lot to the scope, because now we're including the tennis court and the basketball court across the street, making that one more mobilized. Initially, the grant was just for the basketball court and splash pad, and now it's kind of expanded, so the project budget is increased. Um, so I just want to make it clear that that's a product that's ready to go, is literally out to bid, unlike a lot of these other ones.
One of the thoughts when we were putting this list together was that, on the list, as you see, we're putting money.
So just, just for the sake of everyone?
Everybody wants to see, you know?
Yes, please.
You sure on everything, okay, all right. No, but the thought of putting into these park applications, you know, Riverside Park Tennis, we have in here Hillhurst Park Tennis, Central Park Improvement Tennis, but Jerry Grail Park, original scope really wasn't so much outside, where the tennis and the basketball were. And so we thought that, you know, it'd kind of be more equitable if we increased it to kind of grab that components in there, so that we're not doing projects, and you do one component, and then we hear it later on. Well, all these other parks got those components. So that was different from the last time Tristan was up here talking about the lighting components. So what we did is we put the lighting component, and we add into that kind of the sports court components, so that if we were doing four of the arc, all the courts would be kind of similarly done with the coatings and refresh and things like that. Um, so that's what the cost went up, because it was outside the original scope. But that, that, that's what we were, can you make a question about?
Well, where is the cost, I think that's the question.
Well, I. Well, and for the, we have, we don't have the bids back, we have some estimates. You know, we're, we're getting around, like, what we're using, for example, is Riverside Park. Riverside Park, we're just working with CHA, and I think we do kind of a two-tennis court, basketball court combo down there. We're right in the neighborhood of 250 to 300, to freshen the surface, fencing, reco, and, and bring those courts back. So then this, we have two courts and a basketball court. The center court, we kind of already had in our budget, the main court, but it was those two tennis courts, and then the, uh, was a remote basketball court. Those were the areas that we're looking to, to get this funding for. And we did have a meeting with Amber with 15, well, maybe we could program in there. Um, some of the money is for lighting. We were, uh, which is unique, that this would be one of the only, you know, lit areas for shores in this area. We don't have a lot of lit courts, but that is part of our, our scope, was lighting there. So it's just to bring the whole park kind of up.
Questions? So. Go ahead. Yeah, so you're saying, so the original, so the main court was in the original.
The main court, yeah, correct, the main court was always a base bid, the main court was part of it, but we weren't going beyond the main court, or we weren't going to the two tennis, and then the one, uh, I want to call it saddle, it's like saddle and basketball.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have any idea what number, because we have, we have a came forward from the, from what the mayor recommended before, but we don't have anything unnumbered there yet?
No, I mean, if we, we would like, we're going to hit the bids soon. So we could, you know, get the bids, bring them to you, and we kind of talk about what we want to do. I mean, that would be the most accurate, um, if, if we do it that way. But right now, we just have estimates, so we're estimating that those court components are going to be similar. The 250, the 300, and then the lighting, that's over $150,000. And so we had to go through together, we got 450, and then we just, you know, everything we only do has a contingency in it, because the costs are just so unpredictable.
So are you telling us 450 right now? Is that what you're saying?
I thought in the, I thought in the request was five.
Was it five?
Right, I thought that was in the request.
All right, discussion around that? Because it is out to bid, I knew that before it gone out, nothing, but now it's back out to bid?
Yes.
So. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rivera, this is your. You just told me that.
No, I'm listening here. You want to speak, or just?
I'm not, I'm just, no. Miss, she was shaking her head, so I didn't, I started calling her back in.
Yeah, 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 we can, we can discuss that, mention that in terms of parks. I don't have an issue moving forward about, since it's all prepared and work is being done. I mean, the mayor asked for a proposal, $500,000. I don't have any issue adding that to the parks' projects. Sherry, go on, to the list that I mentioned, all that's involved.
There's a handout.
Please.
Again, um, my recommendation, as we discussed it last time, would be incorporating the money for that particular purpose, because it's out to bid, it's still going to have to come back to the city council to actually approve the contract, right?
Yes. We're pretty much doing the same as we did the last time.
Right, unless there's, unless there's a.
Unless there is a contingency assigned to it, we'll let you know, because I knew we have a separate program on that.
Right, and what we did last time, there were certain, um, as a reminder, um, certain, um, organizations that the council wanted to move ahead with, um, in terms of funding them directly. So we said authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for those particular ones. Otherwise, it was just essentially to, you know, for lack of better word, tag the money, um, then we would have to come back to the council. it was just essentially to, you know, for lack of better word, tag the money, um, then we would have to come back to the council.
Thank you. So any other special, um, um, moving forward? Cherry Coral, please do that.
So I think it's a good point to meet and interject, so I want to make sure my comments before are in line with Mr. Pani's suggestion, including the other parts. Uh, I, I would be in agreement with holding, uh, X amount of dollars that are remaining for a amended segment. I know that we've all had and heard from the community how that was interpreted, but I think there are still lingering projects that need ample consideration. Um, so I know, although us as members represented with the community, we are coming with our ideas or recommendations, but I still believe that there is a considerable amount of, of potential projects that could equally and should equally be considered. So, um, although I was not planning specifically to put that much force to Jerry Burrell, for me personally, I want to make sure considerations are made, so that once funded, it's funded appropriately, so we're not piecing it together, so I appreciate Mr. Wallen, uh, providing that overview, but then also I'd like to keep, keep in mind of the other projects or other parks that are still out there. I think taking moments to understand what our intent is with the remaining dollars, so that we're appropriating appropriately.
And, and just like, yes, I agree that we need, so, allocate, so we need to sign my, so Mr. Pani mentioned last time. Also, I'd like to see Robert Park be added into that, because it's from our figures, and nothing that, that part is being used every day, every day. So I think we need to give, so these two parks consideration, as we go out, um, allocating the funding in the next round. Go ahead, please.
Okay, Mr. No, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, it's.
Oh, good.
So the Pool at Hillhurst Park needs repaired, that needs to be done?
It's on there, somebody said that.
I thought that was taken out.
No, 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 no.
No.
I specifically mentioned Hillhurst's pool, park.
I apologize, I.
No, sorry, I, I'm Hillhurst's Fairview Park, tennis, basketball, pickleball, dog park. I'm asking for the full funding, as per the mayor's request.
Um, and as I said at the beginning, we, I speak with Miss, um, Patrick as well, and those were concerned, so those were the, the ones that were outlined, Hillhurst, both Hillhurst's projects are actually included.
Uh, full, uh, full proposal.
The full asking. Um, so, Mr. Mudd, Mayor, what was remaining?
Today, we've spent thirty point seven of dollars, that's included in the first rounds of loss revenue, job retention, all the allocation that was done during COVID and after COVID, and then what we did the last rounds. So, we are talking about, um, you know, thirty point seven million dollars that's already allocated. And if, if I need to run back to, I can start with myself, in terms of, let's start to pull some numbers out, in terms of what it costs with our support, specific project for the parks. And that way, I can, you're not going to ask anybody, mention any project, can you just give us a number? Because I think, um, this whole day we're making, that was each one of the projects. So I can start with, um, the Hillhurst's park, Hillhurst's Fairview park, and that has to do with tennis, basketball, pickleball, dog park. I'm asking that we, five hundred thousand there, that's in the proposal. We, uh, just moved on to Hillhurst's park, room repairs. I'm asking for two hundred and fifty thousand there. The A Diamond, five hundred thousand. The Central Park, um, tennis court, five hundred thousand. So we had the A Diamond, the tennis. Okay, Hillhurst's Fairview park.
Hillhurst's Park, five hundred thousand, Hillhurst's Pool, two fifty, A Diamond, five hundred. Central Park Tennis Court's five hundred, so that's one point seven five right now.
I also mentioned Riverside Park, and that has to do with, uh, the tennis, roof, roofs, Riverside Park Tennis, basketball, and court reconstruction, and that is two fifty.
Two fifty?
Yes. That is my, that being a party example proposal.
That's two million.
Cherry Coral Park, we have the consensus on the floor, so we'll do this out, since I'm doing a park here. Five hundred thousand.
Um, well, since I.
Go ahead, please.
Since it, uh, since it's out to bid, and Mr., um, Mr. Wallen has given us what he thinks is the ballpark, I'm, I'm, I can support that.
So we'll add, um, what's it called? So we'll add, um, five hundred K to, uh, the, the Cherry Coral Park improvement. And we have the. I don't think we mentioned, anybody mentioned Central Park Tennis Court, I think.
The other one, so Central Park Tennis, you mentioned earlier, that's just a court reconstruction?
No, that is.
That doesn't include?
That's Riverside Park.
No, you said Central Park Tennis earlier, the five hundred thousand. That's a separate.
Separate, yeah. I am, I am.
So Central Park Lighting, you said this, huh?
No. Uh, that one, I don't know what the other thing, we can discuss it.
I want to give a little clarity.
Yes.
Also, uh, Central Park Tennis, tennis court lighting, is that included in the five hundred thousand dollars for Central Park Tennis Court, or is that something separate?
No.
Uh, so, Central Park Tennis Lighting, that was, I, I think one of the things that we're getting a little lost in a little bit, was that the parks projects were kind of like, I call it, you know, the wishlist, right? If we had this, one of the things that we don't have, and it's not because we can't, is that we don't, uh, we haven't really met with the Parks Committee, we have a Parks Committee, um, and we really like to utilize those committees to prioritize things. Uh, myself, and Kristen, and Anthony, and Paul, the four of us as department heads, we can prioritize things as we see them, but we don't feel that that is great for us as a public parks, and they involve so many outside entities and neighborhoods, and so, you know, if the council would like to, like, this is that. So right now, everything you said is great, my personal opinion, Central Park Tennis Lighting is, it's down there. All right, it's, it's that, this, on the floor. You know, we want to get the other projects done, you know, the A Diamond, we've been trying to get that lit for eight years. You know, some of these other park projects that have just come up that are taking some money, you know, but this was, a list that we put together. And, you know, the other thing, just to make sure, is just because we may not fund it with ARPA, doesn't mean that it'll never be funded, you know, we're going through a capital budget right now, we're going to do a capital budget next year, um, we're programming a lot right now, okay? The person that gets all that done is just me. So, you know, that's a lot to put on the plate. I mean, Kristen does some, but when we get into construction, it's engineering, it's a lot of work. So, we're programming a lot here, we've got to have realistic expectations of what we can get out, with regards to doing this on top of, you know, about fifty million dollars next year of public infrastructure work. You know, so, it's, it's tough, so that's what, if we can, you know, I'm going to try to bundle some of these things together. If we're doing sports courts, we're trying to do all the sports courts with one. Um, but I would also, you know, prioritize things, and one of the discussions we had was, uh, Hillhurst Park, do we make it, and we establish it as a pool, do we go splash pad, it sounds like we want to, which is good, that's a decision that we weren't comfortable making, it's time we had it out there, so.
Mr. Mudd?
Yes. Please go ahead.
Uh, just a little clarity, I know you mentioned, um, project allocation. Is that restricted completely to your title as department head, or is that just due to staff and mutations?
Both. So if we go through engineering, if we go through, I, I don't have staff to allocate things to, I have consultants, but consultants are managed by staff, so it just, it's a lot.
So, Mr. Mudd?
Yeah.
So the, um, the five hundred thousand is not the lighting, the lighting ask is four hundred thousand, and the five hundred thousand ask is researching tennis courts, that's correct?
Correct, so, and, and that cost, that's the other thing, that I would make sure, we do this with our bonding, and it's something that Andrew and Anthony can, uh, work on, and I don't know how this would work with ARPA, so it's not bonded, is to keep things general enough for when we don't use it, or if we do, you know, that we can use it for other, other things. So Central Park, we know that we need to upgrade some of the courts, some of the cracks, there's some heaving in some areas, so we're going to go, um, maybe that's how much, it could be less. And if it's less, does it go back into a pot, or can we use it for other tennis-related improvements? Um, that's where, you know, if we were doing this as bonded money, you know, I would advise that we call this, uh, City of Connecty Recreational Court Improvements, not Central Park Riverside, not that. I know that this is a little bit different, we want to be more specific, but I just want to make sure too, that as we program, we're leaving ourselves some flexibility, so that if Central Park comes in at four hundred, and Riverside comes in at four hundred, okay, well, that's the same amount we can balance, and we can get the projects done. That's why also a prioritization of projects would be nice, so that if the projects are coming in over budget, we get them done, and we don't just have to build one. That's one of the biggest problems we're having right now, is cost of money on projects to stay the same, and we're running into like Jerry Burrell, that we have these projects that don't have all the money to finish, and we really want to finish projects, Hillhurst is a great example of that. You know, so right now, my top projects to finish are Jerry Burrell, Hillhurst Fairview, because they've been out there for the longest, and I really would like to finish them, because people have been waiting for them. And then as we go, we can get to the next round, you know, River View is great, but that, I have that one level of wall, because we've been working on these other two for, you know, a year and a half, two years, getting these done.
And COVID had a lot to do with it.
So, but, so, I, I appreciate that, you know, lands are just not wanting to be equitable in all the parks, so I, so that makes sense to me, why Jerry Burrell, you know, bought me to prioritize Jerry Burrell. I guess my question, um, is, we're talking about the capital, um, capital budget, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about, like, you know, are there other places that, that some of the projects can be funded from? Because the ARPA money is, um, pending relief funds. So I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, I'm kind of to your point, that we're not paying ourselves in accordance where we're, you know, over specific to where it would make sense to move money to a different project to maintain, you know, some continuity of, of most of the parts, if we're able to do that. But I'm just sort of, I'm just thinking about, you know, how do we assure that there's not other funds that could be earmarked for some of the projects? Um, and then, you know, some of these ARPA funds can be kind of returned to the pot for some of the, you know, smaller community, uh, grassroots initiatives.
Well, so, you know, Kristen can talk to this a little bit more, but I'm not going to, you know, so right now, when we do parks projects, the main funding source for parks projects is our CDPG money, we either do CDPG money or corrects. Those are the two ones that we, so when things go over, we kind of rely on CDPG money to help. Now, to your point, though, we can use CDPG money for other things, just like we can use ARPA for other things. Um, I think the last thing we want to do, if you ask Anthony, is borrow money. You know, that's the last thing, because borrow money is just like taking a mortgage out, you don't want to borrow it if you don't have to. But at the same point, I think that we should all be realistic to say the city has needs and desires, the council can borrow money to do that. But like, in my, in my opinion, if I was ranking, we have so many old projects, A Diamond Lighting, like I said, eight years, Jerry Burrell Park, three years, those, those are where I would, I would try to go down, and then we get down. And the community, yeah, this could be the only shot for some of them, but that's kind of outside of my purview, you know, that's what this is. I'm just trying to make sure you understand, like, if we're, we're really splitting hairs here, I think that, based on our meetings, the people at Central Park would love for those courts to just stay at that tournament level, uh, that we keep them at, and hey, look, guess what, if you guys are like, you know, we got a half a million dollars to burn here, yeah, looks like it, you know, but if you have needs, then fulfill the needs, you know? They'll, people will be more than happy to keep those courts at the level that they need to be to hold those turns.
So if, yes, but if we're moving forward with the Central Park Tennis Court repairs, then the lights needs to go side, side, side to that?
No.
No?
No, as we said.
So you're not doing like hill projects at the same time?
I, I, like I will say, up to you, they, they are not. I'm not going to be going, uh, most likely, well, I can say that. If we, if we did the lighting, I don't know if I'd have to go into the courts or not, I haven't looked at it to that level. You know, the idea was, if we were going to do it, we're going to do the lower eight courts, where it's very uniform, light on both sides, and have an area that is lit courts. But once again, is for coming down, it was your decision to where you want to go. A Diamond Lighting, I, I would have here, Tennis Court Lighting, I would, I would have here on my priority list, because this is just putting things on a list of things that people have said that they would like to see. And, but the, but the, keep those tennis courts in championship level is, is very important, because of the amount of use they have, and, and the use.
Go ahead.
Um, actually, I have a question for Mr. Holden. Uh, so based on what Mr. Wallen was saying, in terms of, um, if we, let's say, allocated five hundred thousand, only spent four hundred thousand, a project that we were very specific about, um, can the contract be written in such a way that we could just reallocate the money to something else?
The contract would have to come back to the council to begin with. So if there had to be a reappropriation of the funds, it would certainly happen with the same kind of councils, um, taking on, uh, authorizing the contract. Um, there would be questions on whether or not certain funds obviously qualify for use of the ARPA funding. Um, I believe, I'm sorry.
I just, I'm specifically speaking about parks projects, which.
Right, but it, uh, and Mr. Wallen said, maybe we can use it for other things related to it. Depending on what those other things are, it'd be a question of whether or not those would actually follow, you know, within the parks, whether they would qualify. You know, we would have to get into the nitty gritty of it to know what those other things are. That being said, um, you can certainly, you know, it's up to the council on how general it wants to be in terms of appropriating money now. The council doesn't necessarily have to appropriate money, obviously, you can just wait for, you know, things to go out to bid. The problem with that, obviously, is something, you know, Mr. Wallen puts something out to bid, it comes back, and then, you know, the council has to be on board with one, appropriating the funds for it, uh, because it hasn't already been appropriated, and obviously, going with a particular bid. So that's why we would appropriate it now, um, it can always be re-appropriated later on, if, if not all of it gets used, or let's say, you know, the council appropriates five hundred thousand dollars, it comes in over budget, it's six hundred thousand dollars, but it's still the best deal we can find, and we really want to move ahead with the project, the council might can re-appropriate, you know, other funds, we're going to take it from this project, or maybe we haven't, you know, appropriated all of the funds, and we're going to take, appropriate an additional one hundred thousand dollars. The council can certainly do that.
That's exactly what I want, I, I have a global structure, so we have that little bit of flexibility, so that as we come to get the projects, we actually can get them done, complete the projects. And I'm sure if we really tried, Dan, in the development department, we'd always have that little bit of CDPG cushion, or, you know, I have some funds, but the problem is, is that, you know, to your, to your point, you know, a lot of needs out there. So you can, you can cover fifty thousand maybe, but to cover half a million, that's a, you know, that, that hurts the project message.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, and the other thing, obviously, is, you know, when you're getting close to the end of appropriating funds, you, you know, we put something out to bid, it comes in higher than we anticipated, we will need to have that pusher if we want to move ahead with the project, right? If we only have five hundred thousand dollars left, and this is, this six hundred thousand dollar bid came in, we would have to find, if we want to move ahead, find the funds, so to speak, uh, to get that project done. So whether that's CDPG mies or something else, that's, you know, a question, you know, really for, for finance.
So, I, I guess, you know, but here and there, I think that, you know, maintaining the, the, the courts at that, um, professional level, I think is, is really important, you know, generates income into the city as well, um, tournaments there, so. So I think that's, you know, I, I would say that that's important, um, but it seems like that five hundred thousand dollars for lighting on the court.
Four hundred, sorry, four hundred thousand.
Okay, four hundred thousand dollars for lighting on the court, um, I don't, you know, it seems like that, that we need to be prioritizing the lighting of the A Diamond, and then, at least that would be my suggestion.
I think that's what Mr. Wallen was saying, um, so.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, no, it's, it's not, it's, it's, you're going around, because I never gave my.
Okay, so, uh, so let me just speak back, so, let's continue discussion on the Central Park Tennis Lighting. Um, Mr. Pani, you want to say a few of that, or this tutorial, in regards to how we move forward with this?
No, I'm good right now. No, I'm good right now.
Holding it off or just?
Um, so the four hundred thousand dollars for the lighting, I'm, again, if if Mr. Wallen places it way down here, I'm wondering why it even ended up here. But that's okay. For consideration, um again, it it would be a, you know, I I know the importance of those courts over there. I I can't believe the amount of use they get. Um and I know a lot of people who 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 do do tennis and they hold tournaments over there. And I knew, I know the new guidelines for uh a pace uh scale for using the courts is a great revenue. Um and I think at some point, I mean, if they want to hold tournaments at night, which may happen, uh we could, we could definitely use the lighting at this point, this, yes.
Hold on, what's I was gonna get at is that I I can't stress enough the importance of really getting that Parks and Rec Committee back and having some of these discussions, discussion openly. Because here's, here's my issue, I'll tell you, as someone that I have to put these recommendations out there. Try not to act like I'm hiding it, right? When we had a meeting with the parks people, lighting came up, we were talking about parks projects. There was a lot of support for tennis in general, I put it on the list. That number is a dart at a board because the reason for that is that it's based off of what I've learned from the A-diamond lighting and talking with their sports division, these lights are gonna be shorter, they're not going to be baseball style lights. However, you know, I did not have detailed conversations about how many courts really do we need to light. The most effective seem to be the most smallest compact eight, ten courts there. However, what if they said, you know what, we just want to do four courts, the tennis community only needs five, we could, you could shrink it up more. Or we could move, so it, that's, that's my issue as an engineer standing up here, is that it is a, it's a nice idea. It would really benefit some because some people can only play at night, we're getting into darker hour, the weather's still nice, but the sunlight's not there. But it would be nice to have more of that sounding board and other than myself and some city staff trying to, you know, just assume what you think the best would be for the city.
Go ahead, please.
Um so also, I would recommend um that if we're talking about tennis and lighting, that we would maybe have somebody from the USTA or the group that uses it out there to be part of that conversation, because they know best what needs, so.
And that's where the conversation came from, was from, but it wasn't from a necessarily, it was, it was more of the fact is that we run so many instructional events there and tournaments, that it was really the thought was, okay, well, what if you were a resident, you just wanted to play and you feel like you can't get onto the courts? Well, you know what, now you can, we're giving you the ability to go out there and play, uh but.
And as, as well as some schools practicing there, um you know, their availability, the youth to get on the courts. I live around uh Union College and, I mean, those courts are night, you know, day and night.
The ones in Union Avenue.
Right, on Union Avenue by the college and I'm sure there's, you know, so again, uh at, at this point, you know, I'd say we're working on the parks, I would say I would, I would go with the lighting.
I would be against the lighting, the four hundred thousand dollars could be used much better. Um B-diamond needs irrigation, there's youth uh leagues that need new fences around them. Uh that four hundred thousand dollars would go very far to make sure all that happens. And I think that would be a much better use of that money. Um the B-diamond is part of facility of A, B, and C diamonds, so bringing a mind. C diamond has irrigation, B diamond doesn't, A diamond, of course, is uh pasture turf. Um there's the W Lily Field who's being used for youth activities, certainly could use new fencing. I'm sure the Bay Ruth Field, the soccer field could use new fencing. I'd rather see the four hundred thousand go towards that.
My question is, uh, so while you may have mentioned, but I just want to ask you, the A-diamond lights, is that an estimated price or that's just?
That, no, that is estimated by uh an actual score of a mission. Yeah, so, um that is for collegiate level lighting. So there are two levels of lighting, like three levels, there's recreation, there's collegiate, and there's professional. Uh collegiate level lighting is a higher standard and that's what we're looking at because, I mean, the goal is to always have, you know, college level teams playing on the A-diamond, we bring that there. So we don't want to keep local colleges from being able to play at night, so that is their estimate to do that.
Would you mind giving an estimate for us in regards to the Central Park tennis court lighting?
Perfect.
Uh bring it back to us, because I, we can pull this for a couple of weeks and next rounds, uh we can continue to discuss this on this line. Let's come back when I was, you know, sounds hard.
I'm gonna say it, there is, we kind of, it's just a bit of a technical way because like, for instance, the A-diamond has had lights. So what we're talking about is reestablishing lights, whereas tennis court has never had lights. So we're talking, I mean, we're talking about bringing in new service, new transport, we can do all that. I mean, it's, it's also part of it is that uh the A-diamond is is ready for uh for the lighting.
I, I think we can pick up all this until you more, I don't bring any intensive estimates, so it's, go ahead, please.
Um so listening to Mr. Palamini, obviously he knows a lot more about the parks program, um Palamini will lie about it. Who needs irrigation, who needs water, I mean, how can we find out all the parks? I mean, I have a little park on South Avenue that's a little, it, you know, might bring my granddaughter over there.
South Park.
Right, but I don't even know if it has a name, I've been asking for no smoking signs for years. Um and like you said, asking for no smoking scientists to, to, you know, do. But where, where can we find out, you know, who has a list of all the parks and what the parks may need and B diamond and C diamond and, you know, some of them talking park funding. I saw a little park the other day, I don't remember what it was, and I said to my daughter, oh, that's such a sad excuse for a park here in the city. Had a couple swings, I don't even remember where it was, but, yeah. So Mr. Wallen, is that something that the recreation advisory committees, um in terms of what's needed in the parks? That, I remember, you know, several years ago, we went through something similar where they went out and assessed the parks and it ended up having some improvements. So, um what, to Mr. Trow's question, is that something that the committee would then, um I know it's of the volunteers, I guess.
Yeah, well, I believe a city staff member did do that in development, I don't know if it was Matt or not, years ago, who went and assessed kind of what was there working with some of the parks that, but.
Those, the recreation advisory.
They, they actually, did they assess it themselves?
Yes, I remember, yeah, at the time I was actually on, I didn't know, because.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, we, we have in the budget that Parks Director position, Director of Parks. It, it's still unfilled, we've been, uh, I know the mayor's office and all have been trying. And in the, in the meantime, uh, you know, the staff has been doing it. Uh we don't have a great summary, we do know the needs. Uh I think Mr. Woodberry's point, but Ground Park, um you know, you may say South Park is forgotten, but we, Ground Park is probably twenty-five times the size and it is in probably worship. You know, and we did, you know, one of the issues with a park like that too is investments were made. We had a uh very um well-built uh structure there that was used for uh for sports and that remains. But otherwise, you know, it is kind of been let go. And, you know, it's just staff and levels and things, it's just, and the other part of it is, it's much like, just to be long-winded with all this, it's much like the casino building in Central Park. If you don't have a use and you don't have a purpose, then it's, it's hard to keep making the investment. I know that some uh cricket has been played there, uh but I also know it's a little small sometimes, right? Isn't the size small, Ground Park?
Cricket, that's been played, they had a major, major cricket.
Major tournaments.
They played their sideways, 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 departmental.
So, right, and that's must give, the needs of that park haven't made it to my desk because that's just not, it's not, you know, I, I, I know the projects I'm working on, but I'm usually focused in transportation projects.
Yeah, another reason why I mentioned it's time and so, it's probably meant to time and so, it's a good opportunity to go to the next round, next discussion, we should add these two parks into the consideration, because it needs to be taken care of. So what I recommend, if there's an objection, uh we'll hold the cycle of Central Park tennis court lighting until we receive an estimate from Mr. Wallen and then we can also discuss the B and C diamond, is that correct?
The C, C diamond has irrigation, B diamond would require, I'd say, twenty thousand dollars for irrigation.
So let's open the estimate and then we can, we can consider some adjustment there. Okay, um since we're dealing with park, um Mr. Williams, you mentioned, uh, letting out being a bit into Central Park general site improvement. I don't come into you, but I just want to like, since you're dealing with park, we just can cover that one item and then move around to you.
Actually, I, I mentioned that.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, he just started on it. Um what I was saying is that when, um in discussions with Ms. Patrick, she was talking about the parks.
Oh, sorry.
And then in having um discussions that other council members um did send information, so the um, what I, what, the final number was one million, which would bring us up to the um one, the five point five, because the initial ask was five point five. And at this point in time, we've allocated four point five. So allocating another million would bring us up to the original um asset um from the mayor's office.
Discussion for that. Is there objection adding a million dollars to the already four point five million dollars to the pool animation at this point in time? Seeing that, I will then move forward to make a recommendation that we add a million dollars to the Central Park general site improvement. Mr. Palamini, this is about three point five?
Three, four, five.
Three point five, on that, all right. Um before you go, I think we finished all the parks here, I think we pretty much captured everything except for Michigan Avenue and the tennis court lighting, go ahead, please.
I'm not sure, did that include the five hundred thousand for Jerry Burrell?
Yes.
Yes.
That includes five hundred for Jerry Burrell, so would you, want me to go through the list really quick? Yeah, yeah. Hillhurst Park, five hundred thousand, Hillhurst Pool, two hundred and fifty thousand, A-diamond, five hundred thousand. Central Park Tennis Court Improvements, five hundred thousand. Riverside Park Courts, two hundred and fifty thousand, Jerry Burrell, five hundred thousand. And then the Central Park General Site Improvements, adding a million dollars. Altogether, that comes up to three point five million.
Thank you. Uh I made a, a side comment on Michigan Avenue set on there. I am going to try on getting the sports comment, is, I went to Michigan Avenue and I believe the court was in better shape than I originally thought. There is just two large cracks, so I'm meeting with a vendor to see if the cracks can be opened, filled, and smoothed. The cost may be a lot lower, so I'm gonna try to get a couple of hardened numbers because we may be able to just figure, you know. I'm just, I just want to, we might be able to get Michigan. What I learned at our meeting was that Michigan Avenue and Central Park, they are, they do this, they, they already work together, I did not know that. Uh the USTA, when they hold their seven events, bring so many people that they run satellite rounds at Michigan Avenue while using the Central Park courts. So that's where that five hundred thousand, maybe possibly call that Central slash Michigan and use it for both, uh and just get the tournament courts up. Uh and I think that is something like mentally, when we get together, we talk with um a new Parks Director, New Parks Committee, is maybe we make that designation in our heads that Central Park and Michigan are the city's tournament courts. And then we have another level that is recreational courts, just to make that difference. Uh I might want to discuss that because I didn't realize that Michigan Avenue was used at that capacity. But for them to bring in that statewide tournament seven times a year, I guess they need both. So that was, but they can't use it right now because of the very long, large crack. But it's, it's in asphalt, usually when you have a crack, it goes everywhere. This crack is about as straight as an arrow, so I think it would be the effects. But I'll get back to you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
So, um, what my recommendations, uh one of this, this did come, one of those reasons from the mayor, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for BCNI for the co, thank you, for COVID recovery homes, for COVID prevention, that, that amount would be two hundred and fifty thousand. And then, um, for the Hamilton, that's part of the seven hundred and fifty thousand. Seven fifty thou, seven hundred and fifty thousand total number, I'm breaking it up for you.
Okay, do you see any?
Yes, for this, for part of it. Two hundred and fifty thousand would be for, for exposure prevention, it's uh something they've been doing for a while. And also the, uh, there's another project, the Hamilton Hill Infield Development Project for five hundred thousand. Um that's, they, that both are asks, um they did have four asks, they took one off. Um and I would also recommend the one million for the owner occupied rehab vacant houses project. Um but with that, I would also like to ask that they work with Mr. Ron Gardner to make sure that the people in the program that he works with are people who end up, they end up working um as part of, doing part of that project. That we come up with a community benefits agreement to make sure that they're included um as part of that. Since there's been a lot of discussion regarding making sure that people who live within the city get to work within the city, um I think that we should, that, that, therefore, that helps a project that the city's already doing in terms of um Ron Gardner's, what Ron Gardner's doing. And also lets us get um some owner occupied um rehab done. So I was, I would like to recommend one million towards that. So it's total of one point seven million for BCNI. They did have four projects, but the last one, I'm not, I'm not recommending that one. Um I think, did I say the um City Hall HVAC project?
Before you go, just one recap, I was, I'm taking also, two hundred and fifty thousand for BCNI and that is for the for closure prevention. Final key for the Hamilton Hill Infield Development Project. And the one million dollars for the owner occupied rehab.
Yes.
Okay.
But also, like I, like I said, with that, I want to make sure that there's a benefits agreement so that they're working directly with Ron's program and using the um, the people that he's working with, because currently what's happening is, um as they graduate via the program, then they, he moves them on to firms. So this would be an opportunity for them to um work on, on some city projects as well.
So we're attaching something like a contingency to this, that the, if this were to go through, attaching contingency, I could work with Ron's program?
Put that right into the contract, no?
Okay.
So because it's not determined by an outside funding agency, like we had with, I think, somebody who was looking for funding from, I think, maybe City of Connected Foundation, here, it just goes right into the contract.
That would be my recommendation.
Five point two five right now.
Okay, um also, is City Hall HVAC in there, three hundred and fifty, two thousand?
Three fifty two. Okay.
And um finally, uh for, we've been talking about food insecurity and we've already funded some of them, but I would like to um suggest we fund one million to the Electric City um food cola. Um and I, let me just add that, I know that the county is currently putting an RFP to um have a supermarket come to the Old Omaha Honda on State Street, which kind of addresses the meaning supermarket in that particular area. But my understanding of Electric City would be, this would be downtown, so that people downtown will also have access to supermarkets. So that is my recommendation.
Six, six, one two?
Going in now?
Six point six.
Six point six.
Buffalo, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that all the projects, everything?
That's, uh, yeah, everything running on almost, yep.
Can you go down your list again?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'll go down my list, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, so Hillhurst Park, five hundred, Hillhurst Pool, two fifty, A Diamond, five hundred, Central Park Tennis Courts, five hundred, Riverside Park Courts, two fifty, Jerry Burrell, um, five hundred. That's two point five right there. Um, adding to the Central Park General Site, um, work, adding a million dollars to that. Uh, BCNI altogether, one point seven five million, made up of two fifty for foreclosure prevention, five hundred for the infill, one million for the re, the repair and rehab program. Uh, City Hall HVAC, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, and then, uh, the co-op, one million.
But the, so are you going to get the other projects that I didn't hear mentioned?
Yeah, yeah. I got some of those, 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 the party mentions and programs of this, well.
Okay.
You are.
I am, I am, thank you.
That's a party, so that was a wonderful course, take it.
So, um, so we're just kinda recapping the boxes that we brought forth earlier.
Yeah, we mentioned, uh, so the diagram we have it, we're gonna make notes and write the project description, and then
Sure.
here we are, turns to discussions.
So, um, I brought forth our Hamilton Art Center. At one point two million dollars.
What was that number, one point two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The Coco House at five hundred thousand dollars. Boys and Girls Club, how many? Really, really fast now, you know?
Boys and Girls, how much?
Boys and Girls Club, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eight.
Three hundred and thirty-one, four hundred and eight, Boys and Girls Club. Excellent.
That's all I brought forth, so.
What was the number for Coco House? I'm sorry, five hundred thousand, five hundred, thank you. Two million. Very little.
I'm sorry, what was the Boys and Girls Club we had?
Three hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Three thirty-one, four hundred and eight, could be five thousand, huh? Everybody, eight point six one two?
Okay, altogether, eight million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eight dollars.
That's what it has. So, Mr. Farley, your suggestion on the table is two million. One point two million for Hamilton Art Center, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eight for Boys and Girls Club, and five hundred thousand for Coco House. That will give us a total of two million, zero thirty-one, four hundred and eight. Overall, we are eight point six million here now. Any discussion on these that is on the table? Go ahead, please.
And the Boys and Girls Club?
Yes.
So there, I only see them on here for thirty-seven thousand. Was there something, am I missing something?
Under facilities.
Oh, facilities, I'm sorry.
Okay.
City.
It's on that page right there, yeah.
I, I tried to, I made my big years.
Yeah, on that page, facilities, about, what, two thirds of the way down, so.
Give that.
Thank you. Oh, full scale, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, so it's wrong.
Facility, city. So that's, so that's, uh, for the facilities project, not the youth project that they and something uniform, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Actually, uh, we're talking about the, the part, they actually found other funding, and were able to get that done.
So the thirty-seven thousand, they found extra funding for that?
Well, actually, they got it.
Right, well, they found funding for that, okay. I didn't know that, so that was still on my list. I'm good there now.
Any other discussion on this? Alright, so move forward with these. Uh, just we can, Mr. Coling, one point two million for Hamilton Art Center, three hundred and thirty-three for
Three thirty-one, four hundred and eight?
Four hundred and eight for Boys and Girls, and five hundred K for Coco.
Okay.
That will give us eight point six, three, three, four, oh, eight.
Whatever that number was, as I said, yeah.
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll consider, yeah. Also, the others are next to me.
So I had both Y W C A projects, the one which was the urgent needs, which is on the mayor's recommendation, and the second, which was
Please, um, if you don't mind mentioning, I'm sorry, on the projects, or we, Mr. Coling can, okay, make notes.
Apologies, three hundred and sixty-four thousand for the Y W C A urgent needs.
Home.
Three sixty-four, is it even, is it?
Uh, okay.
Three sixty-four, four, forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Then seven hundred and fifty thousand for the Y W C A's, uh, other project. It's, centers around, uh, transient housing.
What was the number again, sorry?
Seven fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand. The next is seventy-six thousand for Proctors.
Even?
Correct. The next is ten thousand for the, and I apologize about my pronunciation, Kiwanis. And the last is seven hundred and fifty thousand for the Stockade Pump Station. And for that one, that's, uh, their plans are to reappropriate the, uh, old pump station building. Their original ask was for one point five million dollars. However, I think it's a considerable step for the city to make to allow them to get closer to the full asking. And, um, I know we made similar considerations to other projects, so we need to raise the money. Um, and to Mr. Wallen's point, I'm not wanting to have fund projects, they would need to have a plan place the fund or receive funds for the remainder. So I don't know, we need to put a contingency place, or?
Yes. So, well, on the Stockade project, we'll have a contingency in place based on them showing proof of additional funding. Are we gonna set a, a timeline on this, or?
What is Stockade going on here?
Seven fifty.
No, where is it? In here, that's what I see. Is it, is it in here?
Yeah, there it is, one point five.
Sorry. Oh, there it is, okay. Oh, the one point one five, is that, that? No. No, where? Is that on this list? That was in the packet?
Yeah.
That's the, it's on the last page. Okay. Okay, I see. Want a contention on the rest of the funding?
Yes, so Stockade will be contingent upon them.
Or do you just want to appropriate the funds for them, and when they're ready?
It's gonna be contingent upon them receiving additional funding for the for the entire project.
Correct.
I don't have the application history. I mean, we, we don't, like, do they have, like, a timeline on this? And so they didn't, didn't specify, as a timeline, any timeline.
I don't.
To your.
No, no, we do, yes.
They had started, they ended, but they didn't submit like a full timeline.
They said it would be obviously more than twenty-six, like, spend date. They have to raise additional funds, you know, for, that would be the time.
Yeah, I think we need to attach a timeline, because we don't wanna go down to the end of twenty-six, some, we're, seven hundred thousand dollars is there, and we didn't spend it. So I think we need to give a reasonable amount of time, like, twelve months to go seek additional funding for this project.
I would say for every project.
Every one that we have, yeah, we do, we have that, we, for, um,
When we set up the
Aquatic Center, we give them until the end of the, this year, which is a short timeline.
And then twenty-two, or the twenty-twenty-three, what do we?
Twelve, one from the data we approved it. I don't know what to take on the table, because we don't want it to open end until, until the end of twenty-six, and here we are, that we didn't spend the money on seven hundred thousand dollars, we just lose it. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I agree with that, and so also, part of that would be the monitoring that's gonna happen is, that they're doing this um, by the Department of Development, and perhaps there is need, additional need for some support in that area. Um, maybe we should talk about, and maybe not, maybe not make this decision today, but we talk about bringing in support, some support that may be in the form of consultants, because it's a, um, a very limited time, so we don't wanna bring on necessarily a staff person that's there all the time. But I think that this is gonna require a lot, I know this is gonna require a lot of oversight, that's gonna be above and beyond what our staff already have to do. So, um, suggesting that we might wanna consider putting somebody towards, um, have a consultant to, to help with that, um, this process. As Mr. Wallen spoke about, he uses consultants because there just needs to be work to be done that we don't necessarily aren't fully staffed to do. So I think we should be considering that.
I don't have an issue, um, lending and, uh, support, but I'd say I would like to see a timeline.
Absolutely, and that, which person would?
Would, the department.
And would keep track of the timeline.
The R T. Go ahead.
So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I was assuming that most, all the projects that when we enter an agreement with them, there is an established timing. Isn't there?
I, I would say that, and, you know, we, there's a lot of details to work out, but I do think when we get time to enter an agreement with all of these organizations, that we would wanna have some type of date where if the project hasn't started, or there's not full funding, or it's not ready to go, that we would actually be able to reallocate the funds, because we don't wanna be in a situation where, you know, and it, it probably will happen with certain things, like if something doesn't move forward, or there's a change, we wanna be able to reallocate the, the funds, obviously, so I think we, we should include that in all the contracts.
Yeah, I was like, that's, would be pretty much standard practice anyway, right? Even with, like, uh, community block renting, right? Don't we do that with them too, like, depending?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, yeah, that's, okay. Thank you.
So, are we gonna reference anything in regards to the, the seven fifty being allocated to the pump station? In the resolution, so that way it's noted?
I'm sorry, can you make that again?
I'm saying, um, are we gonna reference a contingency against this, um, pump station renovation?
I think we would need to, because
Yeah, I think we should.
It'd be similar to what?
Similar to what we have done in the previous resolution.
From Kirksey, right?
Yes, and similar to Kirksey, where the contingency is noted in the resolution. Mr. Williams, any more, um, discussion on this, or? Yeah, any other discussion in regards to Mr. Williams' proposals on the table? Go ahead, please.
Oh, can we just have a total of where we are?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was just waiting.
Ten million, five hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Ten, five, eight, three, eight, five, seven.
That is correct, that's what I have, so.
On top of the thirty-six, ninety-six.
Ten, five.
This is everything. This is, all the projects that have been discussed tonight.
Tonight, tonight's
Oh, tonight, right.
Oh, this is just tonight.
Yes, ten thou, ten million, five eighty-three, eight, five, seven.
Thirty-six, ninety-six. Mr. Mudavera?
Please, go ahead.
So that, that includes, I mean, I don't know if I said it the second time around, it includes Habitat and SCAP, and Bethesda House?
Did you mention those?
Okay. With my original.
No, I didn't, no, it did not, it didn't include those, so we can go back now.
Please, let's go back, um, we missed those.
Oh, oh, I should be specific. I, I said Habitat at five hundred thousand.
Five hundred K?
Right, SCAP at one hundred thousand. And Bethesda.
One hundred K is a SCAP?
Yes.
What else?
Bethesda at two hundred thousand.
Any discussion on these three additional projects from this store field? Go ahead, please.
Just give me one moment.
No, take your time, take your time, no rush.
Oh, so.
That comes out to, uh, just as a side note, uh, eleven, three eighty-three, eight fifty-seven.
That's an additional eight hundred thousand for those three projects.
One, one, three eight three, eight five seven.
I'm, in addition to the Bethesda House, I see that. Oh, it is for Carol, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mudavera?
Go ahead, please.
So, um, just to be clear, I had said those initially before we had discussion
Oh, sorry.
regarding Jerry Burrell.
Yeah, we, we missed it, sorry.
It's okay?
Yeah.
The second time around, I, I missed, so I'm sorry about that.
So, with those, um, we're looking at eleven million, three eighty-three, eight fifty-seven? Yeah. Any additional, um?
Yeah, Carol's combined, and the Bethesda House is for the Carol, the Carol, um, house project on state.
Oh.
Maybe it's got it.
All the new, got it, okay, yeah, okay, 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 yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were missing. So as of tonight, we're eleven million, three eighty-three, eight fifty-seven of new allocations. Go ahead, please.
Um, so I had, uh, the mayor had, um, allocated in his, again, going back to infrastructure, something that we all benefit from, um, two million, five hundred thousand for funds for improving sidewalks and streets and along the corridors, so I, I, I know, you know, a lot of these things, uh, that we've allocated funds to go to benefit so many people in the community that need them, and then there's, you know, people who live in, in different parts of the community that don't benefit from that, but the sidewalks, everyone benefits from. And personally, I walk in the road a lot of times, um, just not to trip on sidewalks, so I'd like to see how much we could allocate for the infrastructure for the
Yeah, the last time, um, it's Patrick that brought this up, and I had asked May McCarthy for a description of the, um, the overall of the projects in terms of the sidewalk, in terms of the road, and we didn't receive it from him, and May McCarthy's not here tonight. I think that, um, based on the last conversation, when we were discussing this, I think everybody was on board in terms of allocating more. It's probably, Mr. Paul, we need to send more money.
Yeah.
We, we need more money into this project, but, um, I think we should get a little bit of description of what is exactly gonna happen. Sidewalks, where is it gonna happen?
Looks like we have forty-two million right now.
Yes.
And there's fifteen, I said fifty-two?
So we're looking at about ten, eleven million dollars.
Nine point eight something million left. Nine point eight million left.
Nine point eight million left. So again, and, and again, we want to keep, um, I believe a cushion for the projects that we are allocating money to, in, in case, you know, double funding especially in full, that there's money left to fund them. Um, and again, as Mr. Williams states, there are a lot of people we didn't even get to on here that, that, you know, we might could allocate some, some money to, so again.
Is there something that we can ask, um, Mr. Wallen, Mr. Ferrari, to help us get a breakdown of sidewalks? The sidewalk project, or what exactly is going to?
When you say sidewalks, you had to remember, you mean curbs too.
Yes.
Which is, which is important, sidewalks.
Yeah, we, I think the concern is that sidewalk, where is it? Is it the money, is full of money is going to be there and we're going to decide to walk with petition? Or are we going to just take this money and do streets, which I don't have a problem with streets, but I want to be specific in terms of sidewalk? What are the project? Or if it's a part of the money that we're going to do petition, right? Go ahead, please.
So I know personally, I'm not a sidewalk expert, but my first question would be, what does that three point five million dollars do in the dent of all of our, um, sidewalks that have issues? But then what sidewalks do we prioritize? Do we prioritize school sidewalks? Do we prioritize sidewalks and the power of improvements? Do we prioritize sidewalks where, um, homeowners are not able or, um, it's a renter household where we don't want those funds displaced to in, increase our rental prices, which are already sky high within our city? Um, so for me personally, I think our sidewalks slash pavement is a long-term plan. And I do not want to call Chris Wallen back up here because he's due to come back up here. But how do we look at the current policy of how we implement chip within the city? Um, because I think that is where we need to discuss. I know, uh, I haven't had a chance to have discussions, um, to understand more of the mayor's intent. But if it's truly to disperse all of those funds for our street pavement, I think we are at time to have that conversation of should we distribute those funds exclusively for sidewalks? Or do we need to look at more of a, uh, a, a, a different distribution of proportions? Uh, because I know for me, living in this city, if we're dedicating all of those funds or a large majority of those funds to the streets, Schenectady is prone to have crappy streets. I think that's synonymous with our city, unfortunately. Not, no, no offense to. So I think rather than putting forth limited one-time use funding, I think that is a discussion I'd be more willing to have.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's something that I'm leading towards still because it's a new sidewalk. Let's put additional funding towards improving our streets.
So I know that there's some infrastructure money that's supposed to be coming down. Do we know the status of that?
I asked that question last cycle, and apparently it was, it doesn't have a timeline on that. Mr. Ferrari, is there any timeline to that? Infrastructure money?
In fact, uh, I think the state just said that they're, they're starting to put out some grants now, so that's what we're looking at.
Okay. So maybe we can incorporate that into this infrastructure when we have a number, so we can set aside some media. I, I just want to mention this in regards to the, the retention, job retention, and obviously allocated here. Mr. Ferrari, I know we had a conversation that, um, a couple of weeks ago that, um, we're not going to spend all this money. So at some point in time, we need to make some adjustment to these numbers in terms of the, um, the budget allocation for twenty twenty-two, the four point six million, and the allocation for the one point four million dollars. Would you be able to get that back to us in two weeks?
Sure.
The job retention?
Yeah, for twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, yes, those numbers, I think there, there are some changes going to happen here. We can get some more, uh, realistic numbers. And there where we'll be able to free up some fundings with regards to, um, the budget allocation. And that will also trigger the job retention numbers going down also. So Mr. Ferrari is going to work on that, we'll deal with this as we get to the next rounds. And we'll address, yes, street and sidewalks. Top of everybody's, uh, priority. Um, anything else we should discuss here? I would like to wrap this up and move forward with allocation, eleven million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars this round. On top of what will be already allocated. And then we can continue to discuss this, the additional funding in the next two weeks and hopefully wrap it up there.
So my, my question is, um, as far as the same funding, so this, um, the remaining funding is for the second round of applications that we promised the public?
Well, you want to talk about it, go ahead and talk.
Yeah, I just wanted, I know that, you know, we told people that they would, people didn't fill out an application for the first round. And when, when we first, well, when I was bringing up the fact that maybe we should extend the application process, some of the feedback I got was if people can't, you know, didn't make it within the deadline for this round, they will have a second opportunity to, um, to apply for funding. So, um, I just want to make sure that we're all clear that that is, that we're all moving in that direction. Unless we're changing what we initially told the public, I just want to make sure that.
Mr. Mudavera?
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, that, that was never agreed to. I mean, we never settled on that. It was a discussion, there was never any vote, there was never anything decided. There were a couple individuals on the council who wanted that, but it was not set.
Ms. Wallen?
Nope, she was first. Mr. Farley, with all respect, thank you. I don't know who we is because I never said that. Again, you see what we've gone through here and the amount of people that need money that are looking for funding. So, I mean, if we're going to do something, let's hand out who's already put in their application the one time that we decided to do it. I do not think there should be another run of, um, requests for funding. Or you run into another seventy-five million dollars for requests, which I, I think is what we got the first time with the applications out there. And unfortunately, I said, I'm, I am not in favor of that by any means. I'm sorry, thank you.
Go ahead, please, sorry.
So there was discussion about that, um, a lot of discussion about that, and it was said many times. And, uh, one of the specific things I do remember when the project for golf course came up, initially it was maybe one point five or some, a much lower amount than we, um, ultimately allocated. And the reason, and, um, when I asked the mayor why, I think it may have happened here at this table. It's because he said when the second round came, he was going to be looking for money from that round. So, um, although we never took a vote and, but there was certainly, uh, seemed to be a consensus that we would be doing that. Now, Mr., to Mr. Williams' point, he, he mentioned that maybe, uh, we should not have necessarily the same kind of application process. Have some process where people who did not get an opportunity the first time, since we made a commitment of sorts, um, have an opportunity to put forth, for instance, we, um, we taught, all the parks were listed, except Steinman's Park was listed on the mayor's. So that would be a, a group that would have to, you know, we'd have to put something together there. So I think that if we could figure out how, it doesn't necessarily have to be, um, same process. And, um, just for, for clarity's sake, I'm not saying that we need to, to do an advisory committee again. Um, that was a very long process. So, but we should come up with something, I do believe, to, um, be able to entertain folks who, um, anticipated. And I actually had this conversation with someone over the weekend, it was like, okay, when the second round comes. So people are under that impression. Um, and so I think that we should figure out how we can somehow do this without it being as long a process as the first time. That's, that's how I see it.
So in terms of Steinman Parks and Grout Park, we, we don't have an application in-house regards to Steinman's Park or anything close to Grout Park. So in that case, we will have to, um, get application through your department with regards to what exactly we needed at these two parks?
I mean, I think that's where Chris was saying, like engaging with the recreation hazard committee or bringing in, you know, uh, some type of way to be able to prioritize some of these things, but, um, I mean, that would be.
What's Steinman's Park?
Right.
Mr. Paul, you're talking about a whole general park to allocate the time, we're asking.
Let me be clear. If we're talking about city parks, city facilities, applications to me are just ridiculous. We're investing in ourselves, we're investing in our community, we're investing in every single resident in this city. And to say we need an application for a city park to make improvements to a city park, I just think is, is silly.
I wasn't asking, I was just asking if we need an application for these two parks? Because if the other parks did submit application, do we need to go through the same procedure as these two? If not, then the city does need to make a recommendation to fund these two parks first.
I didn't agree with it in the first place for city, for city projects. It's ridiculous. I mean, we're investing in our community. Why are we, if we wanted to have a, a application process, then should have set aside some money for these proj, projects and then whatever for city projects? To have applications or it's just silliness in my mind.
How, if you don't mind, come on, um, so how, how did we, um, allocate money to these park that we are, we're funding tonight? We're proposing to fund tonight? These parts?
I believe some of them, I think Chris just had a list, it was more, yeah, um, of, of needs that we were aware of. So if you're saying, like for Steinman's, you're trying to say like, what would the scope of work be, like, what's needed at that park? I believe there was a plan first, was it first Steinman's? I was like, probably like ten years old now. But they did have a master plan. I believe some of that stuff was accomplished. We could go back to that and see. But I think it would really be up to the neighborhood, like, to understand what really the priority is for the park. I don't know that information right now, but I do think that it's something that the neighborhood would know.
Is this something that we can have an updated, updated, um, information on that? Let's see where, to see where we stand in terms of.
So Steinman's Park, uh, I don't know if there's a, if there's a scope. You know, the reason that we excluded Steinman's Park from this list was that there is, I believe, still a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant coming to Steinman's Park for the preservation and repairs of the historic wall and the preservation of the path and possibly the extension of the path around the pond. That was the focus for that. And with that funding, we were going to just use it as we could. And also we needed more since part of it was a path. I was going to supplement the paving money, which usually we have enough of on an annual basis. However, if there are other things, you know, in that, uh, report that we mentioned, it is ten years old. There are dog parks, there is a basketball court, that's defunct back there, and a tennis court. But these things, once again, have no champion. I guess that is the best term to do it right now. You know, the people who are talking about it are, it is the wall, it is the path. And since there hasn't been anyone right now talking about the other amenities of it, that they don't have a place on that list. Other facilities have all had people ask us for those facilities, we've had meetings about those facilities. And because we do not have an organized group to discuss parks, you know, it is the loudest voice is the one that we hear. If there is no voice, there's, there's no advocate for the park right now unless there's some need for public safety reasons that we have to step in.
So we could reach out to, you know, the neighborhood and?
We, we could, it's just that way. This process has evolved. I would use that to be using nice, kind word, is this process has evolved. And this is a little bit different than where we were. You know, um, right now, the city did make some applications and these projects didn't have application. We're going to go with parks. That's great. That's your, you know, that's your decision to make on this. Uh, but, you know, I guess we just have to be flexible. If we want to be more at Steinman's Park, what is that more? I have thoughts, I've had, had some conversations about what that more is. I'm even nervous to mention what that more is at this table because it's, once again, it's just, do we, do we do it? I, I don't, I don't know. But, you know, usually with the projects, I've had, like, uh, you know, Camille has been very much involved in that. We did the pavilion and we did the community center, we did the building, you know, we did the, the bocce and some other things there in the memorial. You know, those are all kind of grassroots goose hill things. And I did not get that for this round, any goose hill recommendations, other than what we just talked about for the grant. And then Grout Park is, was even quieter. I, I, no one mentioned to me Grout Park. So once again, if we do Grout Park, then it's, what are we doing? I don't have a, a number I can throw at that because I don't know what the scope would be or what the goal is. And Grout Park is very large. So the cost could be, it could be simple as raised items to grass or it could be, you know, build something. I, I don't know what we're, what we're thinking with Grout.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, sorry. Mr. Paul, any?
Yeah, so first of all, Steinman's didn't apply because they just thought the application process was crazy. Uh, secondly, there have been asks from Steinman's Park, maybe you didn't get it, but, um, there definitely has been asked. Certainly the hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant that, uh, something in step got will go a long way to doing the wall and, and the pathway, but it's not going to cover the entire expense. There's been asked for, uh, frisbee golf, that there's ability to have that and even go into Kaleberg Park. Uh, the fixing of the basketball court. So there is, there has been asked. And I just want to make that clear. You know, maybe you didn't get that. Totally get it because there's so many levels, but there, there's been asked.
And the one thing that I was going to say is that when we were meeting with county representatives and, you know, that was, you know, if we had a master plan, and once again, our master plan is kind of just what we talked about, is that if we were to add another splash pad anywhere, there isn't one on the north side of the city. I know that you used to swim in Steinman's Pond, you know, eons ago. But now, okay, is that an area that we want to introduce that to? So then there was some desire to try to go to that round, which was introduce some kind of a water feature there so that the north end of the city has something because, you know, as we're moving the installment, that's one area at Goose Hill that has it. It's a large area in the city. So, um, but.
Yeah, and just to add to that with regards to Grout Park, yes, there were many years of committees being asking for lights, building, seatings, and doing a lot of work. I can't recall, they're constantly asking us all the time. So yes, they have been asking for a few things there. So I think we can just revisit those things and see where we stand at this point in time.
So I was, what I was going to say is that there, I recognize that there has been asked and I think that that, that's the, and the significance of having an application process is that when people ask, there's an official way for you to ask. And therefore we can look at it and, and, um, you know, review all the information. And then some of those questions that we're trying to answer right now on the fly, go through the process and we can make a more informed decision. So again, I think that, um, this right here just is a clear example of why, you know, we need to have, uh, to honor what was said around, um, uh, a second round of applications. And, um, for just these reasons, because there are people who, who might have thought the application process was, I don't know if that was what you described, but that's what, or for whatever reason, maybe they were unaware that there need, you know, what, uh, what, what would be, uh, within the parameters of what this funding could do. So again, as far as increasing access to funding and honoring just basically being who we say we are, I think that that's what we need to do.
Can I make one more suggestion, Mr. Shush?
Please, go ahead. We welcome your suggestion, okay?
I just, this is something that finance commissioner said to me years ago, uh, in regards to how these projects are lengthy and how much time they take. So capital money, capital money is used for physical objects, things with a ten-year useful life. So we can use capital money to buy chairs, to do the roads and to do parks. So capital money can be used, capital money cannot be used for community groups. Okay? So I just want to make sure we're all understanding that, that difference here between capital, because you're talking about how to give out. We cannot capital and bond money to give out, all right? So just understand that part of it. The second part of it is, we may want to, because this ARPA money is flexible as far as I know. Since I don't have a plan for Steinman's Park and I don't have a plan for Grout Park. And those are projects that could be used for capital. We may want to set aside some design money, which I don't have any. And put together some design money aside out of the ARPA, which would be, you know, ten percent, fifteen percent of what we think the total budget would be. And we design the project next year and then we maybe use capital to build the project. Um, because just be, I don't know what Grout Park is, I don't know what the project is. So to sit here and tell you that it's going to cost five hundred thousand dollars, I have no idea.
Exactly.
You know, the, the projects that we have the best concepts of are the ones that we have conceptual design and consultants on board and we're at eleven. and consultants on board and we're at level. No, I just, I just, so it was the same, Anthony and I talked about this. And it's just that idea of you have to have everything all at once. You know, like we talked about some larger projects, we just got money for Craig Street. Craig Street is such a massive project. It is going to take us a year to design Craig Street with community involvement and getting everything together in the permitting process. And you know, if a year from today, we're bidding it, it's a success. That's how long it takes. So with Grouse Park, if you guys, I don't know what Grouse Park is, I don't know what Simon's Park is, I don't know what the scopes are for some of these projects. If we want to set aside design money with the understanding that we may have to use capital money in the future, then that's not a, and then you pick what you want. Maybe the project of Grouse is smaller or larger than what you think. But that gets something going so that we can actually have an actual estimate.
That's the problem.
Yeah, so this is the problem with how we did things. We didn't consider the large picture and the large timeframe. We aren't leveraging our money at all. We have a hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant for Simon's. We could use the ARPA and leverage that into the bigger project. Granted, we don't know what the scope is, but we don't need to know the scope right now. We don't need to spend every single penny right now. We have time. So get the things in Grouse Park as well. Get them designed, figure out the cost. Instead, we don't need to spend all the money right now. That's silliness. We're not thinking down the road. Even with sidewalks in roads, sidewalks will last 30, 40 years. Why wouldn't we use one time money for something that's going to set up the city for a long-term impact? Increasing housing values, increasing livability. So, I mean, we don't need to spend the remainder of the money right this minute. We have nine point eight something million left. Let's use it wisely.
I think that's what we're trying to do here. And we're going to end up at more than nine point eight million because there are going to be adjustments with regards to staffing. Let me just make this thorough than I will.
Thank you, Mr. Williams Baron. So going with Chris and the applications, yes, the applications. There were no applications made by the individual parks. It was just as Chris said, whoever spoke screamed the loudest. And since there were no screams from Grouse Park, Simon's or South Park, no one, thank you. You know, no one got any of those phones. Again, maybe it's just, you know, some new vaults down at South Park. I get, you know, I love going to these cricket games, you know, they don't like that building there. How much would it be to take that building down? Oh, they do? But imagine just being there and instead of the guys on the field being on the second floor, calling the games and little concession stand underneath. I mean, it's just, cricket's huge over there in the park. So again, yeah, so maybe we can get a plan together, put some money in there to budget out for, for, you know, to see what the parks might need. But again, there were no specific applications by any of these people. It was just the city planning department and that was the application. And again, I'm going to reiterate that, no, there's for nine thousand dollars plus a little more, or nine million, plus a little more, there can't be a second round of applications with another, again. How do we, how do we, we can't take care of what we have here in front of us, let alone another second round. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Could Mr. Farah?
No. Okay. So, yeah, so really, so there were, so I just want to be clear that there were specific applications for these projects. Every project that we talked about, there's a specific application that was connected to that project. That's, that's a fact. That's, you know, not an opinion. And it's important, you know, that, that we do honor the process. So we're not in here right now saying, we don't know if Grouse Park is 100,000 or 500,000 or we're not just kind of taking our best swing at it. And to Mr. Paul's point, no, we don't need to spend all of the money right now. But what we do need to do is to give the people who didn't scream for Simon's or scream for Grouse Park an opportunity to scream now. And then we can say, oh, and scream, I mean, via application, and we can look at it and say, oh, this is, you know, what the scope of work is, this is what the cost is, and this is how it rings up against all the other applications that we consider. And that's why I strongly suggest that we do that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the applications that we made by my department for the city were not focused on parks. The parks that actually not, we did not have any formal applications for parks. The applications at the time was that the interpretation for Jerry Brook, right? Right? Was the interpretation at the time when we first got the money and I was working with Anthony, was that we wanted the money to be focused on very specific COVID related things. So the city applications were centered around ventilation, HVAC, improving some of our facilities so that they were better handling of air filtration and climate. And then as we started advancing through this and we learned about the, you know, the restrictions or less restrictiveness of it, it started to focus on, well, you know what, we have a lot of needs with parks. But the parks did not get applied. It was more of a list. And the list was more of where are our needs right now and how can we, you know, satisfy the needs? So we had, so that's where I get it. It's just from our knowledge of what the needs of the parks were, there were no people that really came out. The reason that the tennis was, we had a meeting with the tennis people, but it was unrelated to ARPA. But it was, hey, if we're going to, once again, why would I ask you in a month for capital money for a tennis facility if we can use ARPA money for the tennis facility? So that's, I just want to make sure is that we're clear on that is that, and once again, if we pass on certain things, right? For instance, we are looking like and sounding like that we're going to take a pass at something like improving ventilation at Fire Station One. Do not be surprised that in a couple of weeks, when we have our budget meeting, you will see improvement of ventilation for Fire Station One. Because that is a baseline need of the city. The system is antiquated, it's original to the building, it needs to be upgraded. So that's why I just want to make sure we're clear. You know, that's why I'm really trying to stress to everybody at the table, the whole capital, non-capital thing is because just because it doesn't get approved, doesn't mean you're not going to see it later. And you're going to be paying for it out of, you know, it's going to be a whole thing. You're going to be paying for that.
Right. My point, and I agree, my point is that if I'm understanding this correctly, is that capital funds can be used to, for, to improve a park. Capital funds cannot be used to allocate to a community agency that's going to work in the community. So, okay, so with the limited ability for capital funds, I think that we would definitely want to make sure that if there's funds that we can use to redo our parks and do some of the projects that fall within the parameters of capital funds, then we, I think it'd be wise for us to keep that in mind as we're looking at this remainder amount of ARPA funds, which can be used to do other things and can be used to fund some of the community and local nonprofits that are doing the important work that was directly related to the pandemic. So it seems like one pot is a little more flexible than the other. And I think that we need to keep that in mind as we talk about. And much I think is the reason why it's important that we do a second round of applications. We're going to.
Good.
So my final comment, he said, I feel like you're all yelling our opinions. I think the biggest difference between a good idea and a good proposal is the additional work that's done. And that I think needs to be addressed. No one is saying that there aren't other facets of the community that consider access to this money. I think the biggest issue and for me is a red flag is if our planning and development engineering office doesn't understand the full scope of the needs. I think although we are pausing and putting in place a hold on certain aspects of the parks money, unless we have a somewhat grasp, we can't hold the money forever, which has been the narrative that many of the council members have made. So I think as the tone of having a second round, it's learning from the process initially, learning and adapting. I myself was a huge proponent of having a second round. And by definition, any application or any future considerations for the ARPA money outside of the deadline that we established is a variant of a second round, whether we want to call it that or not. It is an additional consideration naturally. That is a point because we have a start date and an end date for the deadline. So anything after is different. We knew from the beginning that we received far too many applications. That was not, that's not an active thought. And it was letting the community know that everything would not be considered. I think it'd be different if we told everyone, it is not if you're going to receive funding, it's when. Then we are facing a different situation. But that's, that's not the narrative that was ever presented to the community. It was present your ideas, we will have an advisory committee to support our use for the money. It was always an advisory would assist us, but the full reasoning or the full allocation of funds would rest with our council. So I think there is no issue with although the pot of money is substantially lesser than we anticipated. Nine million is still nine million dollars. And that is a large amount of money. And I think regardless of whether someone submits a project for nine point one million dollars, I think allowing the community to continue to interject on this process is a form of transparency that I would always bolster. I know every city project, just listening to these conversations, didn't submit a formal application. I think it is a poor narrative to send to the community. There are two standards that we are going to employ. The city is not advised by this, but trust that we're doing the good work and the community need to do this. Think that that's not the right move.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, the application doesn't mean transparency. The transparency is the discussion at this, at this table and moving things forward and discussing it appropriately. An application doesn't mean much of anything other than there's a group of people who cared about something, took time and put effort into applying for it. But to sit there and say that there's city stuff that needs to be addressed, but we have to apply as city employees for this money when we're addressing a community need is absurd, period. And to your point about the capital money, yeah, capital is not as flexible. But capital has to be paid back with interest. There's also a bond limit. So we can only bond so much. So we have real issues in regards to that in, in terms of taxation and how we leverage our money. And that hasn't been considered at all. Not one single iota.
Go ahead.
So I didn't think I need to make this point, but apparently I do. I'm, I'm pretty sure everyone, if you're, if anyone is, this shouldn't be lost on anyone, but the city could use more money, right? Like that's, we, there's, there's a huge need and we, and if someone else wanted to say, here's going to be, take another 50 million dollars in funds, none of us are going to turn that away, right? Like, so there's, there's calculations and decisions that have to be made at every point. What I'm saying is that if there is capital money, that some of the projects that we're bringing forth can be paid for by the capital money, then we need to consider that when we talk about what this ARPA money is for. So of course, there's, there's a greater need than there is resources. That's why we are in the seats we're in to make these calculations and make these decisions based on community input and community engagement. We were really clear with the community that we were not going to make these decisions or then we were going to make these decisions with them. So, and we give people another opportunity to advocate for projects and things that they think are important in the community. I think that we are always going to be a better, more participatory government by doing so. Why would we not?
Go ahead.
I don't know why, it's because we could have leveraged the money and we could have leveraged it with the bond money and grant money. And think about this thing, we could have gotten a lot more projects done than we actually did.
That's why. So.
Go ahead.
Right. And I don't recall throughout this process, and I think that it's very, you know, it's interesting that we're here now. And now we're introducing, you know, these great ideas, which I think we've been really welcoming to say like, jump in, the water's warm here. If you have ideas on how we could leverage money and do this, absolutely.
That's unsaid from day one. You didn't listen.
All right, please, let's have a go on there. Go ahead, come on.
So my point is this, is that we need to listen to our community. This ARPA money is here for a reason, a very specific reason. And we need to listen to our community and make sure that their voices are heard. And we're not just going to be making our decisions in a silo around what we think is best for them. We don't need to do that. We need to allow access, increase access and opportunity to participate in this process. And that's what we need to continue to do. When we do that, we have an application process and a settlement initiative. That's my, that's my. But I will be to death wars, you know, we can, we can definitely talk afterwards.
Mr. Wallen, you mentioned in regards to the firehouse renovation. I'm looking at my current proposal, you don't have it on here as an infrastructure project. Could there be reason, we're waiting on the infrastructure money, additional infrastructure money coming in? And then we assign some money here. I know you can't speak to the mayor. But I just want to, because it just crossed my mind that it's not on this proposal. But there could be reason why it's not on this proposal, that maybe it's going to be funded through.
I think that the mayor's office and Chris and I don't know if you were working with Alex on it, but it was the mayor's office that we decided to look at parks and not city facilities. And there was, so I don't believe there were any city facilities on the list originally when it was submitted. So I just, I just wanted to talk. Yeah, the whole reason was I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Farah, we was talking about applications was the applications that were made back to Mr. Williams' point in January or when we made those applications, they, they kind of got stale. And then the idea was that we learn more about the money. We changed to this park idea, but we did not make applications. So I just wanted to make sure we're all, that if you went, that's, that's kind of the reason that we're struggling with the whole, you know, what is it, what are we doing? We know we have needs, we're trying to fill those needs, but we didn't get on every one of these detailed scope or application. It's just where we know that we have a need.
And I'm thinking maybe that's the reason why infrastructure was that placed on the mayor's proposal later on for consideration when we receive the obstructed.
And I'm trying to be clearly transparent because I don't want you guys, the council, sorry, not you guys, the council, to talk about these items and allocate this money and then have me come back at a later date after the allocation and say, wait a minute, what are we doing? You know, I just, I don't want, I don't want that to be, because that's going to reflect on me. And I don't want that to reflect on me because I'm going to be the one bringing the capital budget with Mr. Farrar.
Go ahead, please.
So the first round of funding, we were getting to that. So it was 26 million or whatever. So then we put out the applications. Did we do wrong by going over that 26 million with these first round of applications before the second round of funding even came in?
Well, you're asking a question.
You put it out, I'm ready.
So just to be clear, our first round of applications was not the entire 26 million because there was already allocations from, from the city. There was already money that was taken from the city in the amount of 16 million. So when the first round of applications went out, it was closer to 11 million dollars. Okay, so it wasn't 26. And so if you're asking, should we have waited for all the money? The application process was something that was part of the mayor's tour and application process. And that was the decision that was made, that was not our decision to make. So should we have waited at this point?
I'm just wondering, the first round of funding was only 11 million.
Yes, it was.
We got a request for 76 million. So if we're doing a second round of funding, which I'm not in favor of, have we already spent part of that funding? For the second round?
So you're saying you're not, you're not in favor of doing a second round of funding?
No, I'm not in favor of a second application process. But again, I mean, did we overspend already before putting out, was it not fair? Putting out the first round of funding, applications for the first funding of the ARPA money and then second round of applications for the second round of funding for the 26 million? Just, you know, when we only have 9 million plus a little more left to spend, 11 million, just say. Just putting, we don't know, we don't know. So it was, again, there's still applications here, you know, that, just because maybe none of us are advocating for those, doesn't mean they don't deserve it. I'm, I'm just putting that out there. Hey, Miss, there's always gonna be a need for someone, always.
So how do we suggest, how do we address the, you know, the indication, the implication that we were going to do a second round? I think that we need to in some way address that and not just keep it hanging out there.
First of all, the implication was only made by a few members of the council.
And the mayor.
It wasn't the entire council.
And the mayor.
Okay, well, the mayor, whatever. It still wasn't the entire council. So, we can say we implied it, no, we didn't. Certain members implied it and there was nothing ever finally, finally decided.
So we can decide now? Because people, people in the community have that, I can tell you, I'm sure you, I can't say I'm sure you've heard it because I don't know what you've heard, but I know that I for a fact have heard it as recently as this weekend. So, and I'm, and it's been reported in the newspaper that there will be a second round, so it's not like an idea that just came up today.
Well, of course, there's gonna be the thought that there's, because you've been going around saying there's gonna be a second round. You put it in the newspaper, there's gonna be a second one. So, of course, people are gonna have that understanding, but that was not a council decision.
Just to be clear, I did not put it in the newspaper.
I think when we, I'm trying to recall when we discussed this, Mayor McCarthy was, I'm not gonna speak here, he was more in favor of, yes, he can, you know, have his staff open up for another round of entertaining application or other projects. I mean, I've heard good argument from both sides here tonight and, I mean, everybody has valid points in terms of opening up, not opening up. I mean, I'm on the fence. I need some more time to process in terms of what should we do really? How many more people, how many more organizations are out there that needs to submit an application? How many organizations missed the deadline? And what can we do as a council to accommodate the ones that are out there? And can we do something, you know, the council, to accommodate these organizations that would like to submit an application? Whoever missed the application, needs to revise the application and things like that. But right now, I am not in a position to make a determination or a decide. I think I need to sit on it for two weeks and come up with a support for organizations in terms of are we open or we don't open, or we reach out to the organization to submit the application, we reach out to the department of development to come up with an estimate, or the engineering department on the parks, the additional parks that we need to fund, should we allocate money there to the design phase and have it there, so there and, you know, things like that, we need to process. I don't think, I don't recommend that we push forward tonight on this. I think we need to sit on it and let's come back in two weeks' time. They always rule for us, we have time, we're not behind in time, time is good on timing. We're moving ahead rapidly here in terms of allocating this funding and I think we just need to stick with that.
Go ahead, please.
And I don't think you should shoulder the weight of wasting more time, because I would advocate that we wait to have this discussion with Ms. Patrick here, because I think this is a decision that would affect all of us equally as we continue through our tenures. For better or worse, I, I yield to the fact, Mr. Palamini, that you have more of an economics expertise than I have compared advantage. I do not know that or advocate in that realm. I just know that if we are truly to learn from this first rendition, the only way that we're going to truly make sure all of San Diego is advocating for or is being advocated for is working together. So if you have a recommendation for how to adjust our policy, for me personally, that incorporates having a variant of a second round, I'm absolutely all for your score.
And I've said from day one to use, look at the grant and the, and the bonding and the borrowing money. From day one, I've said that.
Yeah. I, I'm just gonna go back, I mean, the last rounds, we did allocate to, you know, several projects, a lot of divorce project and this runs here, based on what we are proposing here, eleven point four million dollars, almost eleven point four million dollars. It's a lot of divorce projects across the board, parks, neighborhood association, you know, community organization. I think we are moving in the right direction, let's, you know, let's discuss, bring it to the table and let's continue to have these meaningful discussions as we move forward.
I just, I just want all of my colleagues to be prepared to answer to the voice of the community who were under the expectation that they, that they would have an opportunity to apply for, for this funding and I respectfully disagree with, with the waiting. I think that a lot of the criticism that we've been receiving and, and has been around the timeline, the things that have been going, I think that, you know, we have an obligation to, to listen to the community and more community feedback and more, and presenting more opportunities to our community is never a bad thing. And I, and I strongly suggest that we listen to those voices.
Go ahead, please.
So, first of all, I am in favor of us doing some variant of a second round as we have continually discussed. As I said before, I'm not asking for there to be an advisory committee, again, although let me just also say that I, a member of the advisory committee did call me and we did have, had a meeting and so they gave some feedback saying it wasn't, it wasn't a bad idea, we just needed to do some things differently. We don't have time for that. I'm not asking for that. But however, I think, I believe that we should have some variant of a second round. It may not need to be exactly like the first round, but we've discussed it and there are projects out there that, community projects that has already been said can't be funded by other things that we should be able to give consideration to. And perhaps there won't be as many as we think, we don't know. But I do think the opportunity should be provided. So, I would say that. And I also, I think that we, you know, we recommended some good projects for funding. Almost everyone here, I believe, had input into that. So I think that that part is good, however, I also think that we should extend a little further into that second round, which has been talked about in, in various ways.
Okay, so I recommend that we have it back after discussion next cycle. If you don't, please continue to have this on the agenda. We'll also add this as a separate discussion also in terms of reopening or not reopening the, this application process as a separate item, if you don't mind, Ms. Porterfield?
It's putting on the agenda.
On the finance committee, away from the allocation.
Okay. Separate things, okay.
So I think we're gonna move forward with allocating eleven million three eighty-three, eight fifty-seven this evening, and I would just ask Mr. Colding to just give, go through a summary of what he has there and we can all, if we are, any error, we can always make adjustments.
Whatever, last one, I go through this, it's gonna be the appropriations and then entering into particular contracts, and if there are contingencies on some of these contracts, let me know, right? So I know that there's one, obviously, when I get to the Stockade Association, would they have to have raised seven hundred and fifty thousand to match?
Yes.
I don't know if there are others on other projects, but let me go through it first, okay? So, to appropriate the following funds, Hillhurst Park, five hundred thousand dollars, Hillhurst Pool, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the A Diamond Project, five hundred thousand dollars, Central Park Tennis Courts, five hundred thousand dollars, Riverside Park Courts, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Cherry Burrell, five hundred thousand dollars, the Central Park General Site improvements, adding one million dollars to what's been already appropriated. BCNI, one point seven five million dollars total, of which two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for foreclosure prevention, five hundred thousand dollars for infill, one million dollars for repair and rehab, and we can go over contingencies at the end for those. Okay, that makes sense?
Yeah.
City Hall HVAC, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, Electric City Co-op, one million dollars, Hamilton Hill Art Center, one point two million dollars, Coco House, five hundred thousand dollars, Boys and Girls Club, three hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and eight dollars, YWCA for Critical Needs, three hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to YWCA for Harbor House. Proctors, seventy-six thousand dollars, Kiwanis, ten thousand dollars, Stockade Association for the pump station, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Habitat for Humanity, five hundred thousand dollars, SCAP, one hundred thousand dollars. The question I have for SCAP, I know they had more than one project in here, which project would that be?
What's that?
For SCAP, they had two applications, one is for the COVID, the homeless COVID-nineteen support, the other one was for their campus project?
No, the homeless, uh...
Okay, for the homeless COVID, okay. Thank you. Bethesda House, two hundred thousand dollars for Cara House. So that is all the appropriations. For the contracts, it'll be a contract with BCNI or three separate contracts, depending on how it will be done out of the particular department. The question I have for that one point seven five million dollars, are there any contingencies associated with those three projects?
Yes.
The five hundred thousand, there's a contingency, Ms. Porterfield?
The infill project?
Infill project, you're calling for a community benefits agreement?
Yes.
Can you please elaborate?
For, actually, for any work that they're going to be doing and using, you know, people to do the rehab, so my ask is for their, for them to work with Ron to come up with a community benefits agreement to make sure that people from the city and from his program specifically as well are, people that work on that project are able to work on that project.
Is there, is there any funding contingency associated with that?
So, actually, I'm glad you brought this up because this is, this money is actually money that they would be using to leverage. And so, us doing this would leverage money from the state. So this is one group that is doing a lot to leverage with the money that they're getting. So, we could put it in there, I don't anticipate they're gonna have a problem with that, but it's up to if everyone thinks that we need that, but I don't anticipate that being an issue, because again, this is really to leverage other money to the state.
The, the contract obviously can speak to that, right? That we're gonna give them five hundred thousand dollars, but they're going to have to, you know, we have a contract with them, we're not, we're not gonna get the money like that. They have to have the other funds in place, right? Okay. So that was BCNI, the three projects. Electric City Co-op was a million dollars. Are there any contingencies associated with that?
I mean, I think...
I think they are also seeking additional funding, so I think we should attach a contingency that similar to the one that we used last cycle.
Okay. And is there a dollar amount contingency that they have to raise? I mean, this is a question, unless you just wanna authorize the contract and let the departments handle it, I don't know what funding they're trying to raise. I just wanna speak to it if the council wants me to speak to it when I draft a resolution, right?
I think that we, we have to speak in terms of the project value.
Okay, that doesn't really have...
The total project value that they're asking, what they state on the application.
Okay, so they have to raise the additional funds?
They have to raise the additional funds to cover those.
Okay, thank you. Hamilton Hill Art Center was one point two million dollars, any contingencies associated with that project?
Was that their total, was that for the total project, was that?
Well, what I have here is different than I think what they may have provided in a revised.
Oh, okay.
So I think they asked for one point seven on here, but...
Yes, revised proposal didn't get cut, okay.
If we're funding them in full, then there's no, I don't know if there's additional funding for the project, I can't speak to that.
I see that Ms...
Ms. Deah?
We did have the budget and as I recall in the budget, they had already had other things covered, so if we wanted, if we put the contingency, it can't hurt because they already have...
I was gonna say that just for clarity and just to be on the same side, just put that in there, that proof of additional funding.
Well, they went from the one point seven down to one point two.
Yeah, but they revised it, then you may have been sent us, so it wouldn't hurt that it gets attached that they're...
Funding contingency to the project also, okay. Coco House was five hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if there's a contingency associated with that.
Let's, let's look at this and see what's the value, was it project value?
Expansion to Hamilton Hill Learning Center, the requested amount was one point three three, the project cost was four point one according to documentation.
I think that we should add that also there for this project. Contingency upon showing proof that additional funding.
Boys and Girls Club, I believe that was being funded in full?
Yes.
That's correct.
YWCA, the Critical Needs, I think that was just a covers programming for them. The Harbor House was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I don't know if that...
We need to attach a contingency in there?
Wasn't, that wasn't the full amount, how much was?
No, I don't think so.
It's one point five.
One point five?
Yeah, so we need to attach the same contingency, proof of additional funding needed.
Proctors was the full amount, Kiwanis was the full amount, Stockade, we already discussed, which will be covering the additional funding. Habitat was five hundred thousand. I know this is for project by project, I don't know if there's a contingency that the council's looking for on that?
I don't think for that one because it is project by project.
I'm only asking, right?
No, no, I understand.
Uh, SCAP for the homeless program, the funding goes directly to the program, obviously, if the council wants additional funding for that.
Sorry, BCNI, we're using the money that we're allocating, proposed to allocate tonight for the leverages towards applying for money to the state.
Right.
So, I don't wanna say this, but if things doesn't go in the right way, should we put a contingency in there that the allocation will be based upon receiving additional funding?
Making sure that the, the project is fully funded.
Yeah, that's already in there, yep. SCAP was a hundred thousand for their homeless program. I assume that there's no contingency on that?
That's just for the program, right?
Right. And then Bethesda House for Cara, or Bethesda for Cara House was two hundred thousand, I imagine that just goes to the programming costs of, that's already in place. So I have...
Is Cara House?
No.
No?
Cara House for supportive housing?
Yeah.
Their ask was eight point five?
Eight point five million?
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have the, the column better here. Yes, eight point five and the proposal was four hundred thousand, our application, twelve thousand, four hundred thousand. I think we need to, to do this also to...
What about?
Cara's house?
What about Cara's house?
Contingency?
Okay. So I'm left with all the, the council's authorizing all the contracts that I mentioned with contingencies for the Stockade Association contract, but they have to come up the additional funding to match the project cost, BCNI for the infill project, a CBI, and also funding contingency, Electric City Co-op funding contingency, Hamilton Hill Art Center funding contingency, Coco House funding contingency, YWCA for Harbor House funding contingency, Bethesda House for Cara House funding contingency. That's what I have.
Yeah, I know we touched on this, but I just wanted to bring it back on table, should we put a timeline on this, maybe like twelve months? I think we should, because we don't wanna open in on this. I mean, we can always come back to the table on us to review and amend the, you know, resolution to give them additional time, but at the same time, we should lock them in to let them go, you know, aggressively towards seeking additional funding.
I see that Ms. Deah is gone, but Mr. Gray is still here, so we could ask him on that.
Now, we, timeline? Yeah, I would say, you know, I would say even twelve month timeline, we have to extend it.
And we have done in the past where we, you know, come before us where we review and we extend it for additional timing. So I think we need to do that. I will give this agency more, you know, a push to go there aggressively, seek funding, seek other organizations to help them fund these projects.
That's to meet the contingencies?
Yes. Twelve months from the date of...
Execution of the contract.
So, just to wrap that up, so tonight we are allocating eleven, three eighty-three, eight fifty-seven, and that will take us towards a total of forty-two, zero, eight, zero, five, ninety-seven. Go ahead.
So we're talking about timelines, is there any way to incorporate that in the previous projects or did we already?
I think we did that. We did that at twelfth of December, we gave... We gave one agency on December thirty-first. And there was one contingency if I'm not mistaken, or two? Yeah, there was one for Miracle, correct? If you guys can help me out with that one. And we did give them to come to seek other agencies, support from other agencies. Yes, and the Aquatic Center.
Of course.
Thirty-first of December this year. So we were more aggressive towards the Aquatic Center. Go ahead, please.
Because my, I just want to be clear that in that meeting, I was against putting any extra contingencies upon. If we're going to have contingencies, then we need to be consistent with our contingencies across the board. And we need to recognize that people's capacity to complete their projects. And so I just don't want us to be putting extra contingency upon smaller grassroots organizations if we don't have the same expectation for everyone else.
I think that's what we're doing. We are attaching contingency on any project that is seeking additional funding so that they will come to us and let us know that they are receiving additional funding.
You're talking about a timeline.
Timeline. We have, we have been doing that.
So there's contingencies around funding and then there's contingencies around a timeline. That's what I'm saying is that projects that we awarded money to or regularly allocated funding to, did we give them the timeline as well? It's just something new that we're doing now and we're going to try to retrofit into what we've done before. So.
The last round, any agency that we approve funding, and if they are seeking additional funding and we partially fund them, we ask them, we attach a contingency and we attach, provide us with proof that you are going outside seeking additional funding from other agencies.
No, I, I, I'm familiar.
We are doing the same thing here tonight.
I'm familiar with the addition, seeking additional funding. What I'm saying is that we're talking about a timeline. I just, you know, we asked a gentleman here and he was saying, yeah, twelve month timeline. Did we give everyone a twelve month timeline that we? I mean, I know you wrote, probably started writing on some of the agreements, Ms. Porterfield.
Sorry?
Do you do, have we been consistent with giving everyone that year timeline or?
Yeah. I don't know what contracts have been entered into yet. I haven't seen any contracts that have come across my desk for review yet. But any contingency that the city council previously approved would be in the contract because that's just what has to happen when the city council passes something. I have to reflect, the contract has to reflect what the city council authorized.
Go ahead, please.
I'm just a little worried about the Hamilton Hill Arts Center. That's where we want Ron to, where, so I want to make sure that that doesn't get held up because Ron might be, not be able to get the funding to pay these individuals. Is, is that what we're?
No.
No, okay.
So the, well, Hamilton Hill Arts Center was just a funding contingency.
Oh, who was the one that's given it?
BCNI had, that's the one where we're looking for a community benefit agreement.
From?
Where they would have to work with Ron. But that's a contingency, and, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a contingency where they, they have to agree. If you're going to get this money from the city, you have to have this other agreement with the city where you're going to use.
Oh, they're going to, and they're going to pay the people that Ron has put through the programs? Okay, my misunderstanding. I thought we would have to.
They have, they have a contract with, yeah. Bring those folks on.
And this project will not happen if they don't receive additional funding from other agencies.
I'm good there, okay. So, so just to be clear, they were going to have to hire someone anyway. Right, so we wanted them to hire, okay, I thought we would have to come up with the funding through Ron. Okay.
BCNI is taking care of all the staffing. Any other discussion before we move this? So may I have a motion to move this evening, eleven million, three eighty-three, eight fifty-seven? Have a second? No, I'm going to second it. All in favor? Aye, thank you.
With, you want, you want, with also authorizing a contract? All of those contracts with the contingencies?
With the contingency, we're moving here, just not over here, the funding, but also authorizing the contract with a contingency as outlined by Mr. Colin and myself.
Can you do that one more time? Just make the motion to get it out of committee. Does someone want to be on this?
We have a motion. I'll second. You second?
It doesn't matter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any other business? Any other business or finance? Motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Aye, thank you.
We have a call, Government Operations Order. We have two agenda items, first, Minister Information Technology Systems. Presented by Mr. Mayor, who is.
Yeah, so I'm here to do this cybersecurity policy for the, for the CVS Connectory. Currently, we don't have a right policy. Actually, we have like from like ten, twelve years ago, one page, that foundation and nothing in there. So we, John and I have been working on this for almost more than a year. Now, we have the police department, corporate, the corporate council in there, put their, included there. So they looked through it and there was some needed items. They, they reviewed it and they listed us. So this is, this policy will be very good for us for the, any compliance we try to match. You know, we ask what you have policy on that. You know, any grant we apply, any, you know, payment card, anything security we do, in cybersecurity policy, this is us. You know, so that's why we're proposing to put that in, including personal policy.
The city deals with delicate information day in, day out, obviously. And we have a lot of systems in play, whether that's out in the field with a code enforcement officer with a tablet, whether that's over at the police department, whether that's, you know, somebody accessing City Hall to go get a birth certificate or whatever it is. There are emails, there are correspondences. So it's looking to have uniformity across the city when it comes to, you know, electronic communications, like, you know, whether that's, as I said, emails, it could just be interfacing on the internet, right? Using WebEx, using whatever. So it's creating something that's standard. And this policy also takes into consideration the retention policy that the city council has, you know, previously approved. Because that's obviously very serious and something we take seriously in the law department, obviously, because of FOIL. And I know that that's incorporated in here about, you know, we talk about deleting emails and, you know, getting rid of correspondences so people don't do that, right? If you're using, you know, a city, a city computer, a city, you know, telephone, smartphone, whatever it is, you're not deleting communications. And if you do, this policy is telling you, you can't do that. You have to follow what the FOIL law says. And you can be held responsible if you don't, right? It's about, you know, not giving access to non-employees, you know, either via, you know, cellphone or computer, anything in our systems. Because again, it's, you know, it creates a potential for, you know, data to get out, somebody to get in, right? Viruses, et cetera.
Do we have data encryption in, in place here?
Yeah, I mean, we do have the default Microsoft, you know, encryption.
Higher order stuff.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, and the secret, like, you know, we don't have any classified, that's why this is, that's why.
Well, no, but I mean, even at the college, we have encryption over data. And it's a higher order than Microsoft, so that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I mean, confidential stuff.
Sorry. I was just asking about confidential stuff to discuss.
You know, confident, yeah, a lot of things, you know.
Sorry.
Right, you know, confidential, no, nothing else, you know, this is all fine for here.
Right.
But, you know, there's obviously confidential information that gets, you know, sent via email.
Yeah, we definitely take care of this policy, dataless policy, you know, idea, remote access policy, like Android and something there. So we have like look-through each, you know, even the police department, some people use this personal phone or something, department piece, something. So there's still those phones if something is there that is used for business. So in case of something, we can ask for that phone to look through it, something like that.
So I know growing up in the military, there's training for absolutely everything. And I think when we discuss technology, I think it's fair to understand that people's understanding of how to use technology appropriately is not the same. So is there any way that you associate maybe like an in-person discussion? Or is the expectation read it in your media compliant?
Yeah, so I think after this passes, you know, my plan is to send it to each employee like we do and who know that which employee they are or not. You can put something in the checkmark to say, you know, I, and if it's, you know, needed or something.
And if I may, frankly, you know, assuming this passes, you know, this is something that I usually talk to my staff about all the time. You know, that's, that's natural for us to talk about that. You know, but the expectation would be, you know, department heads, I think, read this information, ask questions to IT if there are questions, talk to the staff and see if the staff has questions so that it can be relayed if there are questions, right? You know, I think there has to be open lines of communication on what to do with this information. There's so much of that, right? You know, whether that's, you know, hopefully, you know, we're not using our personal cellphones all the time, it's to city business, right? That's obviously, because honestly, when you do it, that's a communication that, you know, if there's ever a lawsuit or something like that, it's potentially discoverable. You know, which is why I prefer things to happen, you know, if I, a phone call is not going to show up, right? If I talk to somebody and if somebody wants to send me something, I tell them to email it to my, to my work email. Because now it's backed up on the server, whereas if it's on my cellphone, you know, nobody gets it, right? Because nobody will know it's out there but me. And I, then I have to, you know, be obviously honest about it, which I would be. I think, but I think generally, the, the thought process here is let's have the policy in place. Let's, you know, get it out to the staff, let them review it, let them ask questions, let department heads, you know, ask questions and, you know, relay information if need be to, to IT and to Boon.
So we're saying let's get the policy out there to staff and let them kind of ask questions up. Have we got any feedback on the policy thus far? Are we here with anyone yet?
So what are the feedback? We're trying to establish the accessible use policy, like, you know, your password, how many characters you should have the password, like, you know, what you, what you should do. You know, like, like Henry said, like, you know, do the, not do the text messages, but do the email for any official business. Somebody have referred of that. Because we, we followed the New York State FOIL policy and, you know, we had like, you know, we had mentioned like so many things you can do, cannot do. All these things we have included, pretty much summarized it and put that in here.
And to be frank, like, this is a, you know, putting this together, I know Boon worked with Chris Marnie at my office on putting this together and obviously with John Puglio. This is a relatively, a relatively objective document. And it really does safeguard because obviously the interest here is on the city, right? We're trying to protect the information so it doesn't get out inadvertently, or, you know, I say inadvertently, through channels that are not the FOIL system or other ways to get information. And also, you know, I know the mayor has mentioned this many times before. We have people who try to infiltrate the system. And it's easier to infiltrate the system if people are, you know, if we don't have a policy in place, right, where we can hold people accountable to follow a particular policy. Because then there's, you know, some, I won't say subjectivity to it, but there isn't a standard, right? And by creating a standard, which is, and this is what it's doing, is creating a baseline to protect the city from both people trying to get into the system and information that frankly should not get out of the system. Social Security numbers, personal addresses, because sometimes we do email PCs of personnel changes, right? And that would have that information in it. We want to make sure that that somehow does not get out to the public because I don't want my social security number out there, right? You know, I don't want, you know, people can find out where I live probably by looking in, you know, the White Pages if it exists anymore. But it shouldn't be getting out through a, a personnel change. So we're trying to, you know, I think, give, create a standard for everybody across the city in terms of dealing with this information. And, you know, it may be that at some point in time, this is going to have to be adapted as technology changes, as our needs change, as laws change. But I think as it stands right now, this is a, a baseline of what the city really needs in terms of creating a, a level of protection for, for the city and also for the employees.
Mr. Harlan, so, you know, you may have mentioned it here, but I just, I don't think we have a lot of valid employees. But if we do have people who are traveling, are they restricted on using public Wi-Fi accessing the city?
So if they're, like, when somebody's traveling outside, they can use any public Wi-Fi, that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, so they can use it, but you know, if they're using VPN, they will be like protected from that. So whatever policy we have on the VPN, our network, that will apply to that person. So, you know, that will be restricted. So they won't be able to visit any malicious website or something because that is from our.
Okay, that adds.
So we don't have any policy right now around?
I mean, there is like, you know, if you see like, excuse me, twelve, ten, twelve years full policy, the computer can get the interos here, I can see it like one paragraph for the computer policies. And it does not have anything in there. So we really don't have like something like this kind of policy.
I think it's fair to, I'm sorry. I think it's fair to say it's piecemeal in a way. We had a policy, but then there were other things that related to documentation, the retention policy, for example, that was something that was separate. And we've incorporated the retention policy into, into this, for example. So it was somewhat piecemeal and, you know, probably lacking. This is obviously much more comprehensive than what we've had.
So this is, so if we were to, this would be looking forward, correct?
This is going to be prospective because it's not a policy until the city council authorizes it as a policy.
So, but this would be looking forward, right?
Yes, yes, yeah, we're looking forward.
Okay, any other discussion around that? And, and entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Some favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have discussion around amending of the city ordinance regarding residency requirements. President Fookville?
Thank you. So as you know, we had a vote at the last council meeting regarding, regarding expanding the residency to the county. The vote, the, it passed five to two. However, the mayor didn't veto this. He sent a letter, which all of you received, explaining why he vetoed it. And I also, and I responded to his letter explaining, you know, pointing out some things as to why we needed to have county residents. So at this point in time, the next step for this is for it to be returned back to the council again at the upcoming meeting to once again come up for a vote in order to override that veto. So I bring it back here for discussion and see if anybody has any questions regarding either letter that you received or anything in general.
So to say for me personally, going through my first veto, I was definitely very disheartened. I think there was a lot of work that was put into getting to this point. And I know the mayor mentioned having some reservations, but I feel like this was delivered fairly lately where I think it definitely, I believe it doesn't take into consideration all the time and effort that it was taken to get to this point. However, it does, neither here nor there. So looking at how we move forward, for me personally, if the mayor is really strongly positioned on not wanting to have considerations for current staff, whether we discuss it in executive session, I would like to know what staff he has outlined, with the understanding of, does this substantiate holding up the entire process? Because still, our city is without. And I think if the mayor is making that determination, and I respect his title, authority in office, I would like to have more clarification and support that. But without having that information, I feel like, again, we are leaving our city employees to hold the bag. And they have resoundingly mentioned that they need help. So I think the voices that I've heard thus far of asking for help far outweigh my assumptions of what the mayor is operating off of. So I would like further clarification. Any other comments on that discussion?
I think my letter was pretty clear and, you know, and I outlined that. I think my letter was pretty clear and, you know, and I outlined that we, you know, the number of openings that we have and some of them are one, one particular department more than others. So again, you know, for those of you who, who did not vote for it the first time, I'm going to ask you to reconsider because this is a, we're, we're putting our staff in a position where they're, we heard it today about Mr. Wallen, like, there's so many projects that he has to oversee and then also our Department of Development where we're allocating this money. So I think it's worthwhile that we do this. And we currently have people that live outside the city at this current time already. So, and outside the county for that matter. So it's already, whether we, whether we have it officially or not, it's already happening. So I really think it's, it would, it clearly, it clearly demonstrates that we have a need to expand it. And this doesn't, this does not just apply to the city of Connectory. There was an article in the paper yesterday about how some employers are actually coming up with incentives to get people to work. So staff shortage is not just something that's happening to us, it's happening all over. And it's really something that we need to address if we intend to be effective and, and make sure that our workforce has the support that it needs. So again, it'll come back to the council for, to be reintroduced. That's what has to happen after a veto and it will come back next with the agenda.
So I would just say that, you know, initially I was, I was against this. I was concerned about making sure that we're, you know, prioritizing the people that live in the city, the people who, you know, and supporting our, our tax base. And so when we put this forward, it was my understanding that we did put it forward with the consideration of having incentivizing, you know, people who live in the city, like, right? That's how the legislation did it.
The discussions that we would come back to that.
That part, and that might even include some bargaining units and things of that nature. Okay, so, so, you know, again, initially I was against that, but I think that in the spirit of what we're trying to do here, if, in fact, that, that, if we are going to incentivize and prioritize people living in, living in the city, I would just welcome any other, you know, kind of comments or discussions as to why that might not be something that we, that we want to do. Okay, here we go. So, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Oh, so we're going to, I thought that this just came back after veto. I thought that sounded, I thought it just came back after once a veto, it just came back.
It'll come back to the city council, but I wanted to bring it back, just have this discussion and let you know it's coming back.
We have to pass that committee.
Still have to.
No, you don't, it does, under the code, if the mayor vetoes, it gets laid back before the council, the next council meeting. So it's very clear that it's not committed, yep.
So, so I don't, right?
So you don't, you don't need to take a motion?
Yes. Go start for me, Cross. All right, so, this, like, adjourn, government operations?
You moved it? No. Did you move?
That was motion, she wasn't making a motion, that was just a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Aye.
So adjourn.
I'd like to call the Order of City Development and Planning. We have nine items on the agenda. The first item, Mr. Wallen, 501 State Street.
First item, 501 State Street, working to table for the next committee meeting. So just push that off till the next committee meeting, please.
Second item.
Sure, always. Award bid contract for the city's Connectory Central Park site demolition of William Keller and Sons, the amount of $218. So as you're aware, we are working as expedited as possible on the Central Park project for the construction of the pool. The pool will be seeded at the existing, where it used to be the former tennis stadium site. Phase one of the project was we engaged with a scrapper essentially to remove all of the metal and valuable items, so to speak, from the site. That phase was completed two weeks ago. This next phase was to do site grading and demolition, which is, we're going to be removing trees in a hill that runs along roadway adjacent to there. We're going to do this now to make this site, what's called pad ready for the next contractor. It's just another step in trying to show progress, show the community that we're, we're moving forward with this. Next, we're going to be going out in the near future with the bid of actually the pool, pool house proper and everything else. But we put this out, our engineer's estimate was between $200,000 and $300,000. And the pricing that we got was for the most part right in between there. Keller and Sons is a contractor that we have not worked with in recent times. I have not really worked with them much. However, I do know that they are one of the, the go-to contractors for Union College. They do a lot of work with Union College, I have a lot of colleagues at Union College. And, you know, they actually, they don't have to bid. They're private, they select who they believe does the best work and they continually work with Keller. So to me, that speaks well for them and the quality of their work. This project also is pretty simple in the fact that it is tree dirt removal. We're going to bring some of the dirt down to Foster Avenue, use it as a cap on some of that. So we'll be able to relocate some of it. So I have no reservations with this price or contractor.
Are there any questions?
I'll move this.
Mr. Williams?
I'm sorry.
A weird question, be remiss and pay for it during the next family meeting. My brother-in-law is an avid disoffer and we do have a large community that fits part in that. Do you anticipate, and then you can let me know if this hasn't even been a consideration, do you anticipate any like long or short-term disruptions to the Central Park disaffording flow?
Permanent destruction. So it is, we're working with Kenji, we've already worked, reached out to him. And our OGS department along with Kenji, we're going to be permanently relocating these holes to other areas and kind of reconfiguring it because would the tennis stadium be abandoned and not allow traffic? It worked well for their flow, but now when we're talking about a new parking lot, a pool, all these things, he, you know, in our meetings, he was on our pool advisory committee. He said, you know what, we walked it and we have some other areas that we'd like to disperse. So they're going to be renumbering the holes and creating a couple of new areas so that they're just out of this area because he feels like it's going to be too many conflicts as we go forward. Good question.
Any other questions?
I'll move this.
Second. Oh, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is approval of change order to Seal Coat USA Inc. for the crack seal, crack sealing of city streets.
This is, quickly add to your discretion. We awarded a Seal Coat contract in April, crack sealing contract, I'm sorry. The winning bid was Seal Coat USA. They came in, they did a great job, expedited in two weeks, they went through all of our budget, so to speak. But we did not do a crack sealing bid a year prior. Just because of our workload and COVID, we didn't do one, so we were behind. We did a small change order to finish up some of the remaining street because it goes by a quantity basis. But there's still a lot that we need out there for the city. So we kind of came up with, you know, we don't want to, you know, really take advantage of, you know, doubling the contracts, so to speak. But we did thought it would be in the best interest of the city if we, you know, gave them a little bit more, authorized a little bit more money to Seal Coat a little bit more streets prior winter and then we'll put out a new contract next year. Due to our purchasing regulations, though, any change order over 20% is at the council's discretion. I don't think it's a bad investment. Seal coating is always the number one preventative maintenance technique that you can do. And we're really trying to make a case to do more and more seal coating every year. I think it actually has really helped some of the roadways. Here at Bullard, I'm going to see that the water's not getting into the pavement. The pavement is without the water, there's a cracking part. The big goal that we're trying to do is put together our program so that we're seal coating roads in the three to four age bracket. So we pave it and then three to four years, we come back to the valley way. And that's usually when you get the most, smallest, most linear cracks propagating up. So this right now is a little bit more of a scatter shot. We're doing a lot of areas, but still, it's our second big contract and this is going to be an annual thing that we do.
Are there any questions?
I have a question. So I remember some time ago, but the mayor was talking about the Smart City Initiative and how that, you know, a component of that would be for us to better kind of gauge when roads and kind of be able to judge the wear and tear on roads that we're using, that information that we're gathering.
Not right now. No, that is, no, right now, what that is relying on is the mayor is installing optical sensors. We call them cameras, but, you know, the technical term is optical sensors. And the optical sensors are going to monitor a litany of things once they're all in place. And one of them, he's hoping, is that essentially they're going to take a picture of the roadway, even if it's every week, the amount of cracks don't happen overnight, you're watching grass grow. But they can take the picture and then eventually you would notice the deterioration of the roadway. I don't know, I mean, I don't even know if Boon would know if that technology is there quite yet. But I do know that we're already using them for traffic control and things like that. So the technology is going to be there. We just, I don't think we have enough, I just don't think there is for that sensor to actually be able to pick up a crack in the roadway. So right now, we're doing, what we do right now is when we pave a road for the season, we put it in the GIS as a layer, we upload it into a public portal that's on the city engineering website. And so then what we do is, we're going to come here, so next year is 2023, and we're going to look and we're going to say, okay, what roads did we pave in 2019 and 2018? And we're going to go drive those roads first as a manual component. We're going to drive them, we're going to say, okay, these roads are candidates. The one thing you don't want is a road with too many cracks because you pay for this by the gallon. So it's not cost-effective to go out there and just, you know, go nuts with it. You really want to have centerline seams, some cracking. If you get, it's called alligator cracking or spalling, that's a whole other technique. So we're trying to, trying to skip that, but, yeah, hopefully in the future we can do that. There's also talk about mounting things to vehicles, you know, so that the vehicles drive the road and they'll be able to do that. So lots of things are possible in the future.
Any other questions? Entend a motion?
So.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wallen. The next item on the agenda is a ceremonial resolution for National Drive Electric Week. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. So I know that there is going to be a national, our New York State Capitol District, District Drive Electric Week coming up, September 25th. So about putting together a resolution, supporting that ambition of prioritizing driving electric vehicles. I know the city has worked exclusively with making sure that their vehicles that they're incorporating into our fleets are more electrical. And it's also an area that's coming down from the federal government of how do we reduce gas emissions. So I think it's imperative of us to better support these efforts.
Any questions? Entend a motion?
So.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item, a ceremonial resolution for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. For similar different reasons, we have a very welcoming and large Hispanic community within our city. And I think it's important to make sure that we intentionally pause and recognize a lot of the, we just pause and appreciate their history and contributions to our local area, so.
Questions? Entend a motion?
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number six is a reminder that the, we're, there'll be a public hearing on 9/12 to support the Metroplex application for the Restore New York grant. And I'd also like the committee to entertain another ceremonial resolution, if you will. Our Lady, Our Lady of Mount Carmel is having their 100th anniversary and I'd like to be able to give them a ceremonial resolution to recognize that if there's no objection.
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The remainder of the items on the agenda are for executive session. So at this time, I'll change the motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session and the public will have to leave. Thank you.